I try to do that as if I was the public because...
You know, I've got to tell you, it's Matt Frinch. Do you know him about Tech in Kansas?
No.
Oh, my gosh. I'm so glad I heard him speak today because it's just been so difficult lately. And he's got some good ideas, too. And he's saying, obviously, we've got a crisis, so we have to move it out.
Right.
But Bill, we've got to start moving up the roots of the...
Right, right.
These were things to be signed from yesterday. Someone put it in my mailbox out there, and when I was leaving, I just grabbed everything. They came from the green folder, I think, if you want to check them out.
Yeah, it's just not something that's going to go away. We have to hit this head on.
Should you have them?
You're right. You're absolutely right.
Oh, okay. I think Amy needs those to copy first.
We've got some more people who need help, but we're going to give them direction.
Right, right. Well, and I think, and I agree, I think moving forward, we need to start formulating that.
Is she here or she wasn't here? Oh, she's not here.
She's not here yet?
She's not here yet.
Oh, okay.
Matt, do you want to start?
All right, I can start, yes. Welcome to meeting this morning. Would you like to make a motion for the minutes?
Yes, I'll move.
I'll second it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll move now from the county commissioners' meeting to the celebratory district commissioners' meeting. We'll open it up for you.
Oh, go ahead. Where the motions you...
Do you want to start the motions and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move to approve the July 21st, 2015 bills as presented by the county auditor and by the Department of Special Finance.
I'll second the motion. It's a discussion. Are the roll call finished?
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. Would you also do that? No, would you do that one?
Sure. Motion to approve the minutes of July 9th, 2015.
I'll second the motion. It's a discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the July 21st, 2015 Journal voucher.
I'll second. It's a discussion. Are we on the roll call?
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the July 21st, 2015 Nannanow certification as presented by the county auditor.
I'll second the motion. It's a discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to approve the contract for recycling with Nelson Township.
I'll second it. Did you have a comment?
The only comment, just so the board knows, this is for their drop-off, five-year contract. This puts us pretty close to just about having everybody under contract. Dawn is working with Kent State, going back and forth, finalizing that language. And I think at that point, we have everyone that we service under contract.
Okay. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to purchase a new front-load automatic truck, automated truck.
This is the truck that we're going to purchase. We received the grant from the Ohio EPA, the $200,000 grant to buy the truck. This will be truck number five in our conversion to automated recycling. And before you go on to the next one, item F, there is, there was a mistake on the one that I had submitted.
Okay, we'll finish this one first. Do you want to get someone? Thank you. On this one, there's a word "of" in there that's not supposed to be there. I'll just show you. We'll cross it off. It's under the first resolved, second line towards the end.
Oh.
Purchase of a... Wait, maybe I'm wrong about that.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, okay. Is there discussion? I second it.
No, I didn't second it. No second. She's doing it now.
Okay. Okay. There's a discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motions, if you would read it from here, if he doesn't have the full text.
I'm sorry, I did flip notes on my agenda.
That's okay. Motion to accept and award the bid of Rarick Pacific Company for the lease purchase of one 2015 front-load style collection truck, three 2015 automated side-load trucks, 25,000 rollout containers for the Portage County Solid Waste District Recycling Center.
Okay.
This is the one where we have a change at the very bottom, where it totals everything up, right here.
This is the new one?
That's the new one. At the end of the lease purchase program, it's a $1 purchase, and that's what we're going to do.
Okay.
I had left that out, and that's why you got those nice new C notes to handle that today.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Enter to a license and maintenance agreement for route manager routing software between the Portage County Solid Waste Board of Commissioners and Desert Micro Software.
This is the routing software that the district will use to establish the route.
I'll second it. No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's good.
It's been a day. This is the software that we will purchase to establish the routes. That way, we can take advantage of as many right-hand turns and make our routes combined with the trucks as efficient as possible.
What is the annual expense?
Thirty-seven hundred dollars. I sent that to you yesterday.
I somehow didn't get it.
That's okay.
That's, everything else is one time only.
One time, right. And then we have an annual maintenance of thirty-seven hundred dollars. And we did get four licenses with this. We'll probably use, that was, it was one or four. There was no in-between. And I will probably, one will be on my desk, one will be on Dawn's desk, and then we'll decide about the other two. But the other thing with this software is we can, we can contract with other departments if they want us to do routes for them, whether it be snow plowing or whatever. We'll have that capability.
That's good, yeah.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Motion for the amendment to the 2015 Annual Appropriation Resolution Number 14-180, adopted December 11th, 2014.
This is the scrap tire grant. We're closing that out. Very successful program. I will have some numbers for the board next year, or next year, next time I come in. It looks like this grant has, in the three years we've received it, we went from about 324 tons of tires collected through the program to just under 200 tons this round. So it's working. It's sending it in the right direction. This grant, this program will now go underneath the district's budget starting next year.
Okay. We pretty much have taken care of all the tire dumps, right?
Well, we do have, we do have, I don't want to say it's an issue, but we are, there has been brought to our attention between us and the Health Department, Nelson Ledges Raceway. I'm still looking into this. They outline both sides of the tracks with tires. I've heard anywhere between one and a half million to three million tires. Now, in the past, they, all you need to do is spray them for mosquitoes, and you're good. And somewhere along the line, they have made some inquiries as to help getting rid of these. The problem is, there's no EPA programs because they purchased, they purchased the property knowing that those tires were there. The EPA's program is simply if you bought 50 acres and at the back part of the lot was this pile of tires you did not know about. That's what the program's for. So we're, we're working with the Health Department and our environmental compliance officer to look into this, and we'll report back what we're finding.
Okay. Did I second it? Second it. Is there discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay.
Go on to the...
Pending items. The last time I was in, we had discussed that we thought that it was probably a good idea to make my rounds throughout the county, to meet with cities, villages, and townships. So I spent some time, and what I've done is, the top sheet is all of the meetings condensed into one, one month.
Amen, Bill.
I know, I know. But you'll see that it's virtually impossible to hit everybody in one month because there's a lot of them. So the next two pages is what it would look like if I spread it over two months. I don't have a problem doing this, but as you can see, between this, the tire cleanups, the fair, I'm going to be racking up major hours beyond my normal. So at some point, I want to come back to the board and discuss some options for this. I do think it's good to have me out beyond the Township Association dinners because I, there are just times I cannot get around to everybody there, and I don't want anybody to feel slighted. But at the same time, I think it's important that I go out, make sure that there's no issues coming up with what the services we provide or anything associated with the district. So please review this, and I'll come back, and we'll discuss this further.
Okay.
Barry Road, Charlestown Township, Alex. We received an email from Commissioner Frederick. There's a gentleman out there that it seemed like his road is a target area for dumping. This is the second time. And Alex was sent out there, and I believe Alex contacted the county engineer.
Yeah.
And cleaned it up. So just that we, with the program, what I don't want to do, this program is off to a very good start, but what I don't want to do is have everybody calling Alex. Because the way it works is, in the contract, Alex is the sheriff's deputy. I contract with Alex's hours. Alex and I meet, we discuss different things. So I don't, I would prefer if someone contacts you, please send us the information, send it to Alex, copy me on it, so that that way we can talk about it and track it. But what I don't want to do is have anybody from the public leapfrog, you, me, and contact Alex directly. Because I don't want anyone to think that Alex is their employee. And again, we're off to a very good start. Now, this is where you get to come up to the big kid's table, Alex. Here is, did you keep one of these for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the basic numbers, since we started in May. I've already conducted 47 investigations. All those investigations, I wrote out or verbally gave warnings 31 times. Six of those investigations was a lack of evidence, so I had to close it out. Seven was unfounded. There was nothing there. Whoever called and complained was complaining about, I don't know why. I still have three open cases. The 31 warnings I gave out, 28 subjects already complied to those warnings.
Wow.
Which, that's what I thought, too. In the last couple of months, I've assisted the sheriff's office high patrol about 29 different times.
Yeah, I think, and again, we're working with the Health Department, too, to try to combat this because when I, when I go out and see the townships, when they do their annual cleanups, some of them will take trash. And unfortunately, for some of these townships, it's not getting better, it's getting worse. The cost of the containers, 4-yard containers, have gone up to $850 per container. We have some communities, like Shaler'sville, that do 12 of those, 12 to 15. So they have limited the amount of trips to two. It's just, it's amazing how much stuff people hoard, and then they dump it on these townships. When, in my mind, I'm thinking if we can send Alex out to be a little bit more proactive because I don't, I don't want the residents to think that I can sit on this stuff until the next spring cleanup, and I can get away with it, get rid of it for free. And just the fact that we do have zoning regulations in all, just about all the townships. And I think, again, this program's off to a great start. It's working, and I'm very happy with how it's progressing.
Good job.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Yourself?
Good, thank you.
You want to...
We started, Maureen.
Yes.
We're under discussion number C.
C. You want to let Maureen know about Barry Road?
Oh, sure.
Oh, yeah.
I went up there, found the bricks and stuff they were talking about.
Oh, fine.
The problem with Barry Road is it happens so limited. It's only been twice, three times the last couple of years.
Sure.
It's almost impossible to try and grab onto it. So I had the county engineer come out and clear it all out.
Oh, wow. I'm sure, I think of his name now, the gentleman in his right call will be very, very, very thankful.
Yeah, I've talked to him a couple of times.
Oh, good. Wonderful. That's, you know, that's just so essential.
Yeah.
I mean, that they actually can see, obviously, the benefit of this, I mean, realize it, and there couldn't be a better testimony to that.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
There's also Alex's report for what he's done so far, since he's been under contract with the district, and the results are very good. Out of what, 31?
Out of 31 warnings, 28 of the subjects complied to the warnings.
Wow.
So it's definitely working. The other thing, too, while I've got Alex up here, I have this email about the rumor roads in the county. And I think Alex has been up on Allen Road, checking around. But my suggestion to the board is that Alex go out to the engineer's office, and if Mickey's staff can provide him with a map of the roads where the rumor agreements exist, then that way, if they kind of venture off their route, Alex will know which roads.
Of course.
And if, if they're out of bounds, and they're knowingly out of bounds, I believe you can cite them for being off those roads, or...
If they're on a road that has a no trucks allowed, that kind of stuff, I can't, through the contract, I can't, because that's a civil agreement between whoever and whoever.
Okay.
I can't enforce any of that.
Okay. Maybe just your visibility out there will help.
I'm hoping.
Would you say again what you, what you can do?
I can enforce if they violate the law on a roadway, like where no trucks through, speeding. But I can't enforce a civil...
Would you document that they're on the wrong route?
I could do that.
That would be helpful because in order for us to take them to port, we have to have evidence.
Oh, sure.
So that would be great.
Yeah.
Did you just say on the wrong side of the road?
No, but if they're on the wrong side of the road...
What I meant was, some of the residents had said that these trucks are so big that they actually will go like left of center. Maybe I should have said it that way. So they're, you know, they're...
I haven't seen that.
Oh.
There are some roads out there that are really small.
Yes, I got it.
And, yeah, and if you had a fire truck, you would have to go left of center also.
Sure.
Because it's just that small.
Yeah. I think that's their concern because of, they feel it's very dangerous.
Oh.
So they have reported that. And if there's a way to, you know, cite or maybe enforce that...
Yeah, if there's any, if there's any roads up there that have the no trucks allowed, for instance, or some stuff like that, I can do it, but...
Okay. You know, Alex, we've been told they've been backing up, they'll go past further, and surely that wouldn't be a good thing, would you...
Were there tanks or, I've never seen, because they're a big area, they're turning around. And they, there's enough room, they turn around, as far as I know. They turn around in their parking lot and back in.
Well, they were saying they go past where they're supposed to be or something, I don't know. And so they back up, and I can't even imagine that, a big truck like that.
Yeah, no, I haven't seen that.
But that's what we've been told.
All right.
Yeah, the best, I guess, Maureen, if these residents contact you, if you could email Alex...
Sure.
...to times, dates.
Or...
And then copy me on it, that would be fantastic. Okay.
You know, I don't know if it'll be appropriate, but the one gentleman that has been in and was, was it last week, Cal, kind of, I don't know if he's a spokesman, but maybe even just maybe a conversation with him, I think would help them maybe understand, or at least appreciate we have someone that can try to help within the confines of the law.
Yeah, sure.
So you're amenable to that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so if we can get you the identifying information for Cal.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
I'm sorry, I can't recall his last name, but just to talk with him.
Sure.
And that would be really good. That's wonderful. This is incredible.
Yes, it is. I'm very impressed.
Thank you.
Indeed.
Item D, we had talked about the roundtable meetings, and I'm required to have two a year. And I would like, I'm going to try to schedule one, I believe, in August, so I would like to use room 708. I'll coordinate that, or I'll have Dawn coordinate that through Deb.
Great.
Manaway Town, or Manaway Village bids. The Manaway Village bids are out. Here is a copy of them. I'm sorry to make three, but essentially, again, we're not going to be able to meet their bid specifications because they want the program out by September 1st. Our trucks will not be in until mid-October. So there's another one. I'm just letting the board know, if you want to send out the same letter you sent out to Hiram Township, just change the name. But it's just, we, we're, the district is physically unable to meet the bid specifications as written, so I don't see any need for...
When is our contract over with them?
We do not have a contract with them.
Okay, so they can fill out...
They can go at any time, right.
You want to make...
Right.
When you can, yeah.
And then one more item, and then we need to go into exec session. We are sending out the information for the drop-off study committee, which is another part of the EPA mandate. So we'll be, we've sent the information, or Dawn is sending that information out to the policy committee members, as we've instructed them. The board wants them to make recommendations to the board. I will bring that back when we get all the information, and then that way, the board can appoint these people to the drop-off committee.
Great.
And that's it. Then I need to go into exec session. Termination.
If you make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second.
See you back at the ranch.
For employment? Sorry, for employment?
Termination.
Termination.
Yeah.
Second.
Oh, all right. Roll call, please indicate.
Yes. Yes.
By the way, I took the opportunity of speaking directly with Senator Ekland, and the two gentlemen that were, one of them commented here in the... We will be, there's a termination of two positions in solid waste, a CMS, a driver and a education specialist. So we will add those to...
Juror entries.
We give juror entries in solid waste. We didn't recess the solid waste commission.
Oh, we didn't. You're right. What do you want to do?
So we can do it now?
All right, we can do it now.
Motion to...
Accept those juror entries.
Oh, to accept the juror entries for solid waste.
Now, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And is there a motion to adjourn or recess the some of those commissioners?
Second.
All in favor, aye. So we're obsessed with some of this. Here are the two.
Resessed or adjourned?
Adjourned.
We can be, Portage County Commissioners, and we probably, you did approve the... Yes.
...minutes for commissioners.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Joanne. Okay, we're ready.
All right. Okay. Motion to approve specifications and set the proposal date for accepting payment by financial transaction devices for the Portage County Common Police Court, probate juvenile division.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to declare the necessity to purchase a vehicle for use by the Portage County Sheriff's Office. This is to be paid for by...
Drug task force funds, yes. And he's, they're buying it locally from Sharpion.
Oh, how wonderful.
Second.
All in favor of the sheriff procuring that from Sharpion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to enter into amendment number five with the prosecutor for legal services for the Stormwater District.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve the request for installment payments of connection charges for connection to the sanitary sewer system and water system in the Portage County Regional Sewer District for Omni Brimfield LLC, 776 Cambridge Court, Kent, Ohio, for water resources.
Second. Wow. That was a mouthful, wasn't it?
Indeed, it was. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve the request for installment payments of connection charges for connection to the sanitary, oh, I think it's...
It's the same thing, it's just a different address now.
Sewer system and water system in the Portage County Regional Sewer District for Omni Brimfield LLC, 781 Greenhaven Court, Kent, Ohio, for water resources.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to enter into a general sewer agreement for sanitary sewer improvements to the new Milford Road sewer extension, Smalley Project for Water Resources.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, please indicate acceptance by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to enter into a construction escrow agreement for sanitary sewer improvements to the new Milford Road sewer extension, Smalley Project for Water Resources.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A war, a motion to award an entry to an agreement with Pesacek?
Pesacek.
Pesacek Concrete and Construction Services for the Main Street Sidewalk Replacement Project in Garretsville for Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, please indicate acceptance by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to award an entry into an agreement with Triple Diamond Trucking and Excavating LLC for the Smith and Cowan Concrete Removal Project in Ravenna for the Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
No further discussion, except it isn't a shame that Smith and Cowan isn't in business to do the concrete work. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to enter into amendment number one with Family and Community Services to provide service coordination for the Help Me Grow program for JFS.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The next item I have is, under discussion is, I'm calling it a vehicle notification memo. I think we had talked, was at the end of my evaluation, and I believe you had to leave early, but the board had suggested that instead of Joe just removing a vehicle out of service, that we should provide notification to the department in writing, copy coming both, you know, to the board and so forth on this. This is what I've come up with, and I don't know if you've got any, you know, ideas of additions or changes or whatever.
I like it because it's pretty succinct, and it has everything in there you need.
That they would need. Now, do you want any kind of notification back from the elected official that they've received it? Do you think we have to go that far?
I think it'd be a good idea for the elected official or director to sign it also, just, just so we know that-
They received it?
So if it ever comes up in the future that, well, we didn't have this, well-
You're right. That's a good idea.
Okay. I can add that to this. Okay.
Agreed, I think it would be very helpful and, I think, essential, actually.
Okay. And if that's, is there anything else? If not, then that's, I'll make that change and then we can ask Joe to do that.
Okay.
Okay, good.
You know, Joanne, we were just talking about a copier for the 6th floor for Human Resources. The copier down there now, I guess, is paid 50% by IT and 50%-
They share, yeah.
Okay. There's very sensitive information that comes through on that copier and it goes out and-
They would be better off to have one themselves.
Yes. So I guess we want to know now, who, is this leased? Is it owned? Is it-
It's on our rental program that it can change at the drop of a hat. We don't have to do anything. We can send it away. Let's say those departments decided we're doing everything on our printers. We don't even need copiers. We can send it back and there's no anything. What I will do is let me find out from Brian's staff how much they do with actual copiers anymore, because maybe we can just move it all into HR and then we don't have to.
That's true.
I can, I can handle that for you.
Okay.
Sure. And then I have blue sheets for today. Shrink them down from the legal side.
I was gonna say, you shrunk it?
Well, yeah, you know why? Because I ran out of the freebies that, the blue paper that they had at the record center on the legal, so he brought me some short. And I said, I can make it work.
I love to hear that. That's great.
We can make it work, are you kidding?
Sure.
The items that have changed this time is, starting with number three, we do have a proposal coming in on the 211 from a woman. I'm not sure what exactly it is, but she went and she looked at it. You know, maintenance had gone in and they cleaned it all up and touched up painting and things like that. She looked at it and so there's something that she wants to do, and I'm just waiting for the proposal to come in. So hopefully, that one will come and we'll be able to rent it. The Kent Community Court Concrete, alrighty. When I originally, what, a week or so ago or two weeks ago, brought you the schematic on what we all, the architect and the construction manager and some of us thought needed to be replaced, and you agreed at that point, well, we sent that to them and we heard nothing for quite a while. So I kept nudging the prosecutor about, well, they came back and there's areas that they say, oh, no, 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 we don't need to replace these kind of areas. So the dispute coming in, and then the prosecutor and Denise, Vic and Denise went out and kind of looked, and they had some ideas. So at this juncture, I, it was my suggestion that no matter what happens, if it's, the area that the contractor is disputing, I think we need to do a court sampling in. And if the court approves that they don't have to, okay. But if the court does prove and we think it's all in the same, we think it's all in the same area, then there's no dispute there. They would have to do it.
Okay.
So that's the next thing that we're trying to do.
If the issue is that they didn't do it properly in the beginning, and say you have a sidewalk six feet long that we're talking about, you do a core here, it may be just fine, but over here it may not be. So how far apart did we do the core?
Um, you know, I don't know that he, I think he, they can tell the actual pore that was done. So they'll start with that pore. So if the pore was three feet, then they'll, he's gonna have to take one in the center of the three feet. And if the next pore was nine feet, he needs to take it, you know, that way. They'll, you know, so that's the next thing that we're gonna be, that's gonna be happening.
What is the name of the company that did the concrete?
Cleveland Cement and Concrete, I believe. It's, they call them CCC, yeah. Those, that's the company, that's the contractor that we're talking with at this point. Okay. The other thing is this, the replat, our survey of Brady Lake property. That's the property where a house is on our, okay. I went down to TaxMap because I wanted them to tell me, are there restrictions? You know, because it was offered that, let's just replat in the portion that can be the county's, fine. And then the portion that the lady's off, quickly claim it over, whatever. And I wanted to know, though, are there restrictions on the size? Can we make it as small as we need to or whatever? Well, the first thing that I was told was, we'd have to probably go to the village because it's a replat of, it's something that's been done already. And when you go there, you have to have all of the people affected sign off, which has been the problem, I guess, from the get-go, trying to get the person. Well, then I went on the auditor's website and I found that Linda Mullen, who's the one who has the house on our property, actually has an address on Bird Drive in Ravenna. So I don't know if anybody contacted her there or just-
I went to her house.
Okay, on Bird?
Yeah.
Okay.
But her daughter or someone, some other person was there and said that she was working. And then I asked, I left my card and asked if they'd call, but she doesn't seem to respond.
Well, so then I wondered, should we perhaps send a certified letter to the house in, at Bird, saying, here's what the issue is, here's what the county is willing to do. I put this up for sale. And if all you have to do is bid on it and hopefully, you know. So should we try that, Rob, to see if we can do that? Before we have to try to get everything in?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll do that then.
And then Denise will kind of approve the letter before we send it.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll have her look at it and when, and hopefully, if the lady, you know, comes back to us, then it can all be done and everything.
Yes.
Not on my list, but yesterday I opened the bids for the property at the Medical Arts Building that we had for sale. And we only had one bidder, and it was the Medical Arts Building who wanted to bid on the piece of property, and their bid was $36,000. So you will get that resolution to accept next week.
Okay. What was it appraised at?
Thirty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I thought, well, okay, then, you know.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you all very much. And see, I think you're back on schedule.
All right.
There is one burning question.
Yes?
Yesterday you and I had a conversation about some potato chips.
Yes.
Where are they?
Well, wait a minute.
Jalapeno, cheddar?
And I think you said, oh, yeah, I'll take those. And I see they are back there today.
Oh, I didn't take the bag, I just took some out. They're good. And they're not really that hot. You should try one.
Oh, no, no, no. It's contrary.
Yeah. So if anybody likes jalapeno flavor, they're, they're not bad.
No, I actually intended for you to-
Oh, no. I just took some out.
And I see they're back there today with very, very hot.
Oh, somebody else must have tried them, but I didn't think they were hot. Spicy food.
I think you should take soul, you know, soul position.
Okay, then, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Todd.
The first three resolutions are just typical. The non-general fund resolution adjusts projects, et cetera, and then to creating funds for road projects.
Make a motion to amend to the non-general fund 2015 Annual Appropriation Resolution Number 14-0942, adopted December 11, 2014.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
A motion to amend the 2015 Annual Appropriation Resolution Number 14-180, adopted December 11, 2014.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
A motion to create Fund 4237 for Sandy Lake Road resurfacing.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
A motion to create Fund 4239, 2015 Culvert Replacement Project.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
The journal entry is just authorizing Maureen to sign the seventh quarter cash reimbursement report for EMA and then submit it down to the state for reimbursement. This would finish funding your 14th grant for that program.
Is there any other dates, journal entries?
And then discussion items. You'd asked me to bring back specifically the request from Judge Gilletteau that in January of 2016, she be allowed to turn her part-time into a full-time. There isn't necessarily anything for me to bring that would be part of our December appropriation if the board would wish to do that. We've talked about the fact that my intention is to recommend the board give each elected official X dollars, and then if they want to do raises, if they want to do compensation moves.
But these were not raises, right?
And if they, well, this is-
Oh, this was that-
The others are even separate. Specifically, it was mentioned to me to bring back this part-time to full-time. The other issue, though, right now is Bev Lowe is still working on the portion of it that would be reimbursed from CSCA, et cetera. So I think right now the board can wait even until we have that information to do anything one way or the other.
So you will let the judge do it?
Yeah, yeah. And as soon as Bev comes to me with information, obviously, we'll move it on. The other, we have a company we've been working with. They're a, they're a smaller printing company, but they seem to be a little more nimble in terms of being able to change billing formats, et cetera, that we're looking at possibly using for the water resource bills and the solid waste bills. We have gotten a price quote from them. Their price quote is contingent upon actually getting a file from the county and running it through their system as a test run to see. What happens is if there's like one owner that has five properties, the software merges all that into one mailing, which reduces the postage, et cetera. They would like us to send a test file. I just want to make sure the board is comfortable with us sending that. It does have everybody's account number, address, name, et cetera. The company has promised that they would destroy those records when they're done. They are public records, but I was seeking the board's opinion as to whether you want us to proceed with that or not.
Well, you can't proceed without doing that, right?
Right. They need that to finish their quote.
Well, if they were going to, if we hired them, they'd have to have those anyway.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Okay. So we'll send that out, and that way we can get a completed quote. And then the last item, the board had asked me, go ahead.
We will get a signed copy of the letter or something that Denise approves of, indicating that they will, you know, not use those.
I do have an email from them. I can forward that to Denise, and she, if she wants more.
I think she wants something signed, signed me.
Okay. We can, we can go that route. I'll, yeah, I'll forward to Denise and see if she would like something other regarding the assurance that it's destroyed. And the last item is a railroad grant. The board had received a letter from the railroad. We were going to look at applying for the last crossing. I can't remember what street it's on.
Cleveland.
The one that needs, for the Freedom Railroad. I did call the department. The lady indicated this particular grant, road repair, road crossing repair is not eligible for it. She did say, though, that they do have some money. She asked where the right-of-way is in, whose jurisdiction. I indicated it was the city. She said, oh, that's too bad. Typically, the, the money they have for road crossings, the priority goes to crossings in state right-of-way. County and city right-of-ways fall much lower on their priority to the point where they're very seldom funded. She said, though, they do send out evaluators who will come and look at our crossings. They do a car count. They try to do a commerce load analysis to see if we should move up the list. My feeling is we won't because we have very low car counts, et cetera. But that gentleman that does our region, he retired, is on vacation, and then is coming back towards the end of August. So I do have a request that towards the end of August, this gentleman come out and look at the Freedom Railroad just to see. I did talk with her further about the possibility of the transportation hub that's been floated around, the idea being that the county, and the site I'd heard was out near our railroad, use a spur that's currently not being used and develop it into a loading station that any business could use. That way, smaller businesses could gain access to rail that maybe they hadn't had before because now you can pull, you know, multiple sources. She loved that idea. She said, that's the type of project that they love doing, that if we would pursue that, we should contact them. They have multi-funding options, multi-year funding options, et cetera. She definitely lit up at that idea, so that's something to keep in mind.
You're an idea guy. You really are.
But the road, the road doesn't look like, they are coming out end of August to evaluate, but I'm not counting on that.
Did anyone talk with Smurfet Stone? Is that the name of the company?
Right now, they are the only business using our Freedom Spur.
They still are using it.
The understanding is, yes, there are cars that go across it. I hear different things. It may only be one or two car a week that goes across that rail line, which is not heavy use at all. The, the one site for this transportation hub is fairly close to Smurfet Stone. The question is whether they could truck to that site and then ship by rail, if that would be economical for them. They have not been approached about that because, of course, we're not close on this other side of determining whether that's happening. The nice part about that is if that would work out, we could then possibly look at abandoning the rail ourselves. Most of it is part of the bike trail anyways. We would just be pulling the rails out and-
Selling them, right?
Decorating it, yeah. And then the portion of the parcel, the businesses, and there's a few houses, I think, are back, don't make any interest in purchasing.
Brad Earhard could, because his business could talk with the city of Ravenna, certainly.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot, there's a lot to be done to move any direction on it.
Who's taking the lead on it?
Though right now, NDS is the one who's brought up the, this transportation hub idea. They're working with several developers and a few businesses that are interested, should it, should it come to pass. Again, initial costs are always an issue.
But on that spur, I wonder if maybe Brad could talk with the possible resources.
Sure.
Everything for me for now. I'm coming back later this afternoon to talk more.
I'm sure you'll be back.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much, Todd.
Have some habanero chips.
Yes, I heard. I might go try them.
Really? You like that stuff?
I hear they're hot, hot, and I hear they're very hot, so I'm-
Do you need a dental fawn?
No, there was only one.
Is that what happened?
Yeah.
Do they have these chips now that are 40%, 50% less fat?
Uh huh.
So to indulge myself, I'm thinking, well, they're healthy.
You have to have that.
So I buy them. But I was busy, aren't we all? I'm zipping through the-
Maybe just pick up these jalapeno?
Well, no, so I pull, I see 40% less, I pull them off the, take them, throw away the receipt. And I went to get them out, I'm thinking, oh, boy. And I look at them and they're, are they habanero or? And I thought, whoa.
See, I can't eat them.
Yeah, well, no, I wouldn't even open the bag. If I'd have opened the bag, I would have had a problem.
Yeah.
So I thought, ha, I'm suspecting, I'll take them to work. So they're in the break room with Eddie.
I saw them yesterday, but I didn't dare touch them.
Well, no, I just said, I said to Judy, put them in there, but put, you know, caution, could be hot.
Yeah.
And now Joanne said, yeah, they're not having it all.
Well, but she probably likes hot food. I mean, she probably eats hot food, so that's why she says they're not hot at all.
And then she said, you should try them.
No. Nothing.
Lethal. Okay, moving right along.
You doing the resolution?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Hi, Dawn.
Maureen. Come on in. Should I start with the resolutions? Yes, can.
A motion to approve the Thursday, July 16, 2015 bills ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
A motion to approve the Thursday, July 16, 2015 wire transfers for health benefits as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second.
I didn't ask, but any further discussion? If not, roll call, please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, July 16, 2015 journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second.
Need for the discussion, if not, roll call please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, July 16, 2015 den and house certification as presented by the county auditor.
Second.
The discussion, if not, if they would please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion items. A resolution to accept the donation of the 1985 24-foot Seane pontoon boat, thirty-five horsepower Mercury outboard motor and trailer to the Portage County Sheriff's Department, presented by Major Kelly. Is this the infamous boat of?
I think it, well, no, this isn't the one with the contract, this is, this is.
This is just a donation, they're just accepting, we can do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept, the acceptance of the donation of the 1985 24-foot Seane pontoon boat, thirty-five horsepower Mercury outboard motor and trailer to the Portage County Sheriff's Department.
Second.
Need for the discussion, if not, Paul and Vicki, accepting the 1985 boat, can't signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Maureen, you had asked before how many boats they have. Lieutenant Nolan says they have three working boats, plus this one is now four. There was a, there was something in the sheet.
Yeah, well, they had requested, well, I don't want to talk about that one.
Lieutenant Nolan, is that still?
It's still out there.
Okay, all right, and then that's, I'm sure they will get that resolved, but it just seemed if we were buying another one, I wondered why, because we have two or three inventory. And we're not evidently. The job description for the employee benefit specialist, I don't know if you have all had time to review that. It's updated, looks good. I've got so much on.
Has Susan, pardon, has Susan, so are we waiting till it's all done and then we're going to show it to her? How's that work, I'm not sure.
Oh, sure we worked, I'm sure we worked with her.
Well, it looked good to me, I just, you know, I'm not as familiar with the job.
Yeah, no, I hadn't thought of that, I would think, you know, Paul, I think did say when he was down here that.
Said he, okay.
Uh, he, reassessed.
I just wasn't sure the timing, how the.
You know, we can either accept it by journal entry or if you're comfortable.
Sure, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, I just, I have just a question.
All right, so add it to the days' journals? Okay, excuse me. Next is from Denise Gerrood, that's from the archive, I don't know the date's available. They're the board in the annual archive meeting.
This is where we all have to come.
Evidently, this is the joint meeting. Another trip to. Torrential diamond. Um, I don't know, have we all?
Dan, have you looked at our calendar to see what would work best?
We can work with them and put on there what's best, at least to make sure you were not out of the office.
Okay, well, the only time I'll be out that I know of right now is August 5th.
Okay, so this is how, okay.
I won't be here on the 12th.
Okay.
So it has to be either the 19th of August or September 16th.
Okay, we'll look at those three dates then.
Okay.
Okay, then next is from Donna, it is approval to post him on this quarter. Would that be the position, no, I know that she had, was it Brian Smith resigned, but that was IP, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, this.
I thought we, we said she could post that.
You accepted the, you accepted his resignation on Tuesday, but you didn't give her authorization to post.
Oh, okay.
I think.
All right, okay to go ahead and post?
Sure.
Journal entry, I got the journal entries, Amy. And the final, I don't know if it's the final. It's a survey of property that, um, Loomis Parkway, um, O'Dowd is requesting. Survey of property, is this something for worldwide, I just assume that's a.
They need permission to, do you want me to send it to Steve Bucky as an FYI?
Oh, sure.
Because it is.
It's a.
So you're okay with them accessing the property just to survey?
Right.
Okay, I'll send it to Steve then.
And this survey crew's only, no digging, I mean.
Right, I wrote that.
Okay.
Yeah, they confirmed that, we called.
Okay.
And the discussion in the director staff meetings, I felt we.
You did, this is just a schedule, so if you.
Oh, the schedule, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure who you want to meet with, I mean, we have here that Todd, Joanne, Bill Steiner and Donna Sather should be every other week, maybe opposite of each other?
Oh, sure.
Then the monthly meetings and then quarterly, because I don't think you want to meet with each of your directors every other week, I don't think. So you can look at that and tell us what you think about that and then we can schedule.
Well, a lot depends on what's going on in their departments, so sometimes of the year they may only need a quarterly meeting, other times they may need to come every week. So, um, do we have to have a schedule that says?
Not if we, we can, we can just put staff meeting and not assign it to anybody, but if we don't mark your calendar.
Well, we had talked about meeting with them, using a staff meeting so that we could talk about policies and such similar things, not, not just.
This is not their regular staff.
No, 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 this is not, no, this is, this was those other meetings we talked about, so why don't we try this initially?
Okay.
And see how it, you know.
So you're okay with that, Jeff monthly, Ryan monthly, Joe Dillon quarterly, okay, all right.
And the dog warden, did you say?
I have him quarterly.
Yeah, okay.
Is that okay, that sounds?
Sure.
Okay, if it doesn't work, we can always change it, it's going to be very fluid.
Let's try this.
All right.
Okay, and the journal entries are, they are what they are, so if there's questions about them, we can talk about them.
Before you move on, you have a leadership meeting on Tuesday, do you have a topic in mind?
We have what?
Leadership meeting, you went to monthly meetings. The only thing that I can think of is these staff meetings, you can introduce those, talk about how the pending list would work if you, you know, talk about departmental pending lists. I can't think of anything.
Have we talked about, have we implemented anything as a result of, of leaning? I know that we, we talked about a couple of things, but we really haven't.
Well, your meeting, is it, this is on Tuesday morning, the 21st, that we are meeting with the lean steering committee.
Right, commissioners are going to be meeting.
Exactly, so you might.
I meant, you know, like a procedure that we've changed.
Just the agenda procedure, but that hasn't affected anybody yet because we're held back now because the iPads aren't working, so.
So we never really did clarify, and we need to do that, something to the effect where if, if a director is informing us by email of not to assume that any of us replying, or three of us replying, is something that they don't have to bring back here, because this requires a board, any action, requires a board action. So I, you know, we, somehow we need to talk about that, I'm guessing.
Was that that electronic thing you're talking about or not?
Well, yes, it started out as electronic, so, you know, revisit that or maybe have a remediate form. Something that will indicate to.
Just the policy.
A policy, right, yeah, just by saying, yeah, I got that, it sounds like a good idea, does not mean we're implementing it and that they have a board approval.
So you want to confirm the leadership meeting and?
Yeah, I, I think that's probably confusing to them too, you know, they inform us and we all get back and say, gee, that's a great idea.
It means nothing, right?
It doesn't necessarily mean that we want to implement or that we, that they have the action to do that.
Yeah, we could say, it sounds like a good idea, it needs to come before the board and then there's no questions.
Sometimes I don't do that, you know, I just put.
Well, I've stepped in.
And then, are you scheduling another task force meeting? Or you're going to wait and see how it goes?
We did yesterday.
Oh, did you, okay, so it's on the calendar already?
Didn't we announce it would be next week, same time, same practice?
We've got a leadership meeting Tuesday though, that's usually when we do this.
Twenty-first at seven thirty, yeah, you start at eight with steering committee.
Oh, okay.
Oh, so you scheduled something, so you have a seven thirty? We need to get on the calendar, whatever you've done, we should.
We have some obvious, a lot of discussion, decision to make as to how we're going to proceed with this. So I, I would almost think that maybe we shouldn't have any.
I don't think we should, I don't think we're ready, Maureen.
Yeah, no, because we talked about.
I don't think we're ready Deb, because we're.
Laying out a plan and, no, in particular, we're meeting with the, the other committee Tuesday, so I would.
The steering committee we're meeting with.
Right, so should I send an email out to that group saying?
I don't think you should, because I don't think we're ready.
Are you suggesting?
Maybe you could just.
I don't, I wasn't there, so, did you schedule it? Did you, so it's seven twenty-one at seven thirty? Do you have an alternate date?
I think I remember you saying when we concluded the meeting, we should meet again next week.
Different date?
And, and maybe we did tell them that. I don't know, some of them left the room wanting, you know, when are we going to meet again? So I don't know if we got anything out to them, but maybe we could just let them know that the commissioners are, you know, considering, yeah, are weighing everything, whatever, just to let them know we are giving it.
A lot of thought and consideration.
Yes, a lot of information to process.
But I think they need direction from us and we're not really ready to give that.
Yeah, right, right.
So I, I'm not canceling, I'm just going to reschedule for a time to be yet, to be determined.
Right, right, yeah, I think there's fear if you cancel it that they're going to assume we are.
Done and we're not done.
Yeah, we're done, we're not done.
We're not done.
We're not done, no.
All right.
No, no.
You know, we need an executive session today.
Okay. For?
For employment or termination?
Oh, okay, all right. Where are we right now, maybe we could do that now?
Yeah, you're good.
Commentary before commentary, you said most eleven?
Has anyone said they're coming in today that you know of, Amy, okay?
No, that would be till eleven thirty, all right. Okay, so is there a motion for executive session for personnel?
I saw Lou.
Second.
Roll call please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Did you say employment or?
Termination.
We're going to actually recess, just recess for right now, for the next period of time. And we may, we may then reconvene.
We're waiting on someone to come over.
Yeah, we're waiting for Denise to come over.
Okay.
Okay, we are recessed. At this time, um, this reminds me, I sent an email yesterday in response to Patty Corley and I did, I got an indication that somebody's mailbox was full, I'm sorry. I don't know, I don't know who it was, but, because I think Jim Awkward and Mike were on there too. I sent a, thanking them for their response. And again, I got an indication somebody's mailbox was full. So I don't know if Patty got it, I don't know who else who got it.
Okay.
So I, my concern was more for Patty because I think I told her, you know, thanked her and asked her to let the others know. Ooh, I gotta get some.
So recessing?
Yeah, we're recessing. Is this everything that we, don't you need this, I mean, I can go back and get it.
It's all right, I'll be tight.
And hold this up even further, right?
It's all right.
Okay. Who is, uh?
Who's on first?
Yeah. Have you called a meeting? Well, we're trying to piece together exactly what, what course we're going to pursue. We have been prepared to, and, you know, to put the sales and use tax levy on the, on the ballot. And then yesterday, Judge Dowdery, Judge, or it was Tuesday, I'm sorry, Judge Polin, Judge Osbrych, Judge Fankhauser came in and said they wanted us to impose the tax, which is a pretty hefty order. But we went back to the task force that we've been meeting with and we laid that option out and also told them that we had a lot that we needed to weigh and consider before formulating a, a final as to how we proceed. And some of that, I think, all is in how much will be generated by the tax and the things that we have to accomplish with it. And so we asked Todd to put together some figures for us and I think maybe that's, that's where we are. It will bring in, what, approximately five million?
We're making twenty million a year with one percent, so what's a quarter of that, five?
Yeah, right, right. So therein lies the, I guess the conundrum as to what plan we would have, that we would put in place to, to appropriate that money and to spend it. And we, over the course of the last few months, we, we've talked to judges, we've talked to, probably we haven't talked to the prosecutor, I don't think that about it. We've talked to the sheriff countless times, we've talked to adult probation, and they all have increased need for more funds to deliver the services that, that fall to them. So in that, no matter what happens, if it's on the ballot as something for people to vote on or not, if it generates the five million, we have to decide how we're going to, have to have a plan as to what will be the first, I shouldn't just say priority, but how we're going to spend it. I think when we were on the circuit with the public hearings about the tax, we talked about the first thing we needed to do was make some alterations at the facility, the justice center, the jail, and make some, as I said, alterations there so that we can accommodate the female population. I don't know what that is to date, does, does anyone know what the county?
Sixty-five as of last night, sixty-five as last night.
Sixty-five, which is way over the, what, thirty-three or?
Thirty-four, yeah.
Thirty-four, so it's obviously still a prolific problem.
I guess they had Job and Family Services out yesterday because there were children involved with the folks that they brought in.
Well, we were in Joga County this week, we were there Tuesday. And the, two of the commissioners were there and said that they have quite a bit of room in their jail. And I don't know, we had asked the sheriff to look into the possibility of, I don't know what the word is, outsourcing some prisoners. I don't know as though he's had the time maybe to do that.
I think he's reluctant to do that because of the cost, because he said it's going to cost no matter which way we go. But I mean, I don't, I did mention to him also about the Joga County having room.
We should have asked when we were up there what it would cost.
It's fifty-one dollars a day.
How much?
Fifty-one a day.
Fifty-one?
Because that's more than fifty-one a day for housing. And apparently that's what some county is doing, they are, I don't know, they are utilizing the jail space of Joga and not what they're paying, it's fifty-one dollars a day.
They did say that they, they built their jail ten years ago, so evidently.
They just got it paid off this year, they said.
Yeah, right, and they have lots, they have a lot of space.
And I think we pay more than fifty-one dollars a day in our facility.
They done beds for federal, and I don't know if the housing, I know, but it should be up there too, really.
I was, until you got here, Denise, I was just kind of recanting maybe what we've already know in the sense of what's supposed to do. What our first thing, first priority would be with money that comes in. And that would be to make some renovations out of the current jail, to accommodate that female population. And you were going to maybe bring us up to date with these options on?
On sales side, I don't know, oh, there's. Yeah, I provided you a checklist outline. Pass this as an emergency, as a process of things. Emergency resolution. To have it be effective as of October one of this year, you have to pass that by July twenty-eighth and get a copy to the tax commissioner. Otherwise it will not be effective until January first of two thousand sixteen.
I, you know, I'm sorry to do this, but I can hardly hear you.
We're going to pass this as an emergency resolution. To become effective October first of this year, you would have to pass that resolution by July twenty-eighth and get a copy to the tax commissioner of Ohio. Because the tax can become effective on the first day of the calendar year of a quarter. If you don't do that by July twenty-eighth, any emergency resolution you pass will not be effective until January one of two thousand sixteen.
Does emergency negate then the electorate's ability to, is that called, to put a referendum on it?
There are two options taxpayers would have. One is under Revice Code 30531, which would, they would have to file a petition within thirty days of your resolution. That petition would have to have ten percent of the last gubernatorial electors, or people who voted in the last gubernatorial race, which turns out to be four thousand seventy-nine signatures, ballot signatures. That would be given to the county auditor, and we give it to the board of elections to validate those signatures. And then that petition, once it's on the ballot, could be at any general election, which is November elections, or the succeeding primary election in a even numbered year. So it could go on. So it could go on this, in March, yeah. But that petition has to be filed within thirty days. The reason it would not go on in this November of two thousand fifteen is that it would be pretty difficult to get over four thousand signatures by August fifth of this year. That's the Board of Elections' deadline for November election. The alternate referendum remedy is, or petition to repeal, is under fifty-seven thirty-nine point zero two-two. That petition, again, ten percent of the voting at the last gubernatorial race, would have to be filed with the Board of Elections within ninety days of a general election. So that petition could be filed within, if that petition could be filed, it would have to be filed by August fifth of this year. If it's not filed, obviously by August fifth, and it's filed any other later time in the next year, then that would go on in November of two thousand sixteen. That would be the first opportunity. Again, it would take four thousand seventy-nine ballot signatures. And, yeah, that's pretty much how it goes.
And the other option is just to place it on the ballot as we originally intended.
You can, the Board can pass this as a non-emergency levy, and ask the Board to put the question on the ballot in November. And if you do that by August fifth, it will be on this November.
It doesn't have to be as an emergency, that's really-
That's, yeah.
An out, is it not?
Yeah, the strange thing is, the statute said you may ask the Board of Elections to put it on, but it doesn't go into effect until the Board of Elections does place it on, so in effect, you have to put it on.
Well, you know, to me, it does seem like a dastardly need not to take it to the public and give them the opportunity to, to vote on it. And I know the need is critical, but again, I think we need maybe more of a, a plan as to what the expectations would be on this money as it comes in, who is gonna need what. I see it almost from the elected official standpoint as being a, I'm gonna say, a cure-all, and it will not be that. A treatment center, a lockdown, treatment center alone, and Todd, I'm just using your figure, because you were started the other day when we started talking about it, just to build that, the debt service on it, and then also to staff it twenty-four seven, I think has a price tag maybe approximating that entire five million a year. I, and I don't, we don't, we haven't had the time to really research this as to what that would cost, and then I don't even know if this is something that the, I guess it would be the judges and the prosecutor would agree to, if that was to be the intent of that money coming in. Then I, you know, you caught the issue with the fact that crime is on the increase, and I think people, the electorate, wanna see, I think the sheriff said, boots on, boots on the, on the road. They want increased patrol, and that requires more staff, more cars, but it just seems like an end, ever, never-ending, a little hair.
Keep in mind, the sales tax would not be effective on, or based on water, craft, or motor vehicle.
One of the things we talked about in the task force, and Joel Maury brought this up Tuesday, because we, we were talking about the need for a detox center, because unfortunately, anyone incarcerated, if they're, have an addiction problem, they're going into jail and they detox in jail, which has got to be the most horrible experience, plus, really, it's not fair on the part of the officers to have to deal with that. But I can remember back to when the Health Department hosted their symposium not too long ago, someone asked, or mentioned about Joga County having a facility, detox facility at their hospital, and it occurred to me at that time, that was a UH facility. So I mentioned that, because Robinson was to soon become a UH facility, and had them at the time, that we should ask Mr. Kolecki about the possibility of UH having a detox center here. Now Joel, Tuesday, if you recall, he talked to that, and almost, I don't wanna say things he didn't say, but he almost inferred that we're almost there.
They're talking about-
So, I think that has to be factored into, however we would, where we would put that priority, and again, a lot of this goes to the judges, as to a lockdown facility, but also a detox center. I mean, if, if we're going to maybe be able to get that through some, you know, the ability of UH to provide it, that may not be something that we will have to-
But Maureen, the problem with that is, that would have to be a voluntary go-to-the-hospital to detox. What we're talking about is folks who are arrested because they have heroin, because they've committed crimes associated with heroin. We can't say, okay, go detox in the hospital. They're gonna walk away. That's the problem, that's the difference between what Joel's talking about, and it would be great if we had that at UH, but that's not going to necessarily affect our issue. A lot of people voluntarily, maybe their families will convince them to go through detox.
Sure.
But I can't order somebody to go to the hospital and stay there, because there's no lockdown facility. They'll just walk away. I mean, I can, I can say stay there, but they don't have to do that.
What about the other facilities that they outsource to now? Are those all locked down?
Um, Neocap is.
Just, just Neocap?
Neocap is. The other ones, Raymar and Akron, you can walk away and they don't take you unless you're a Southern County resident anyway. Orianna, they walk away all the time.
Let me ask you, just 'cause I know you've been a strong proponent of it, is that exactly what, in this case, I'm gonna say the judiciary want? They want a lockdown facility?
Yes.
For detox?
For every, I mean, put it this way, the way I look at it, and Judge Piven looks at it, and we've talked about it at length, the only way, when I have somebody come into my system because they're charged with a, with a crime somehow associated with heroin, I can keep them locked up in the jail for as long as I can. Maybe it's two months, maybe it's three months, something like that, until their head gets to the point where it's clear enough to understand that the next step is gonna be treatment. Until they're ready to do it and go into treatment, it's not gonna be effective. I mean, if I took somebody, if I got somebody, you know, who's only sitting in the jail for a few days, and I said, and they detox, and I said, okay, you're going to Neocap next, they wouldn't, it, it wouldn't work. So the, the system, and Judge Piven went to some symposium out in California, I think, that said the same thing. You have to incarcerate them, that's not what everybody wants to hear, but you have to put them in a position where they're not a threat to themselves, they're not a threat to the public, and they can actually get this out of their system to some degree. Then the next step is treatment. So when I say keep them in jail for a while, I don't mean a couple days, 'cause that's gonna help, but until, I mean, the ones that I'm keeping in for a few months and then giving, you know, letting them out, they're doing so much better, because, and they thank me for keeping them in jail.
Yeah.
But, you know, again, that's not what people can hear, they don't wanna hear incarceration, but truly, that is, you know, I've only been doing this part of it for seven months, but even as a prosecutor, that's what I saw. You know, keeping them incarcerated, whether, if you have a detox center at UH, that would be great, but that would really only affect the folks who want to go there willingly, which you have some. But the ones we deal with are the ones who are obviously committing the crimes associated with their duties.
Yeah, for that symposium, I was sitting at the same table Mim was, and of course, she's experienced that in her own family, so, you know, when you, when you hear that from people that are besieged by the problem, we need a detox center, and then it, as these things come into play, and you realize, gee, UH is gonna be here, and if we could get back, that, that's a milestone.
It is, and it's great.
But, yeah, the, the need goes beyond that, right? The need goes beyond that. I, do, do either Janet, you, Vic have any, anything that you can help us with here?
We got a problem, and you all know it, and it's a tough decision to make, no matter what's done. Been there, done that. I was under federal court order until the jail.
Oh, was that in ninety-five?
That's when it was completed.
That's when I first came into office, and it was in eighty-nine.
Sure.
I mean, we, he summoned us to court, his name was Sam Bell. You build it, or I will.
Well, but the federal court order would not be predicated on saying you need a lockdown facility to treat drug addicts.
No, no.
You need it.
It's overcrowding in the jail from a lawsuit, is what they add.
No, I, I agree, so, you know, whether-
But we have an overcrowding problem, and if we keep putting in the paper we're gonna have a lawsuit, hey, maybe somebody will pick up on it.
I can't believe we have it so far, quite frankly. We have enough problems at the jail, and surprise, we have not.
Well, we could get a class action, and that'd be worse.
The, the really sad part is that what we're doing now just simply doesn't work, that the heroin addiction is becoming epidemic. As a result, we have a huge increase in crime, which people, put people at risk, and when we capture them and put them in jail, we don't keep them long enough, and we don't do what we could do while they're incarcerated, so that maybe we can have some of them at least not repeat their offense. So I think the challenge to us is to provide a better system, that when they're committing crimes and going to jail, we have to lock them up for a longer period of time, and part of that lockup is detox and treatment, and as long as it takes, if, if the judge believes it's gonna take eighteen months, then we need to do eighteen months, but right now, they're not going in that long. And even when they go in, we don't have a place for them, and we're not giving them treatment. Then if we have the right facility and we do the right thing, the hope is that we will have fewer people coming back again and again and again, and the crime rate will go down, and the, and the demand on jail space will go down, and in the meantime, we also have the sober living house, it's being opened very soon, which will also help for those few people that still need additional-
Yeah, it's a step down from, yeah, a step down from Neocap.
Yeah, so I, I see it as critical that, that, I think the general public doesn't really understand how serious it is. We have eight people overdosing on Wednesday, another one died yesterday morning, I think you said, for, and not all of that's in the newspapers, some of it is. We've had really good coverage lately concerning the issue, but I, I do think it's upon us, the three of us, to make the best decision we can make on behalf of citizens.
But we're being petitioned by, in this case, the judges, to impose this, and to me, it's also a critical issue, because it is also a right of the public to be able to vote on things. So that's where the impose or let the public make a decision as to whether they feel they want to support it. And I agree, it is a critical, critical problem. I think, I wanna get back though to a lockdown facility, as to what that would cost to build, and then also staff, and that would be an ongoing operation twenty-four seven. I don't have any figures in front of me, I don't know what that would cost. I, you, you cited a figure the other day, Todd, you thought it might consume the majority of that four or five million, and that may be very realistic. So where do we, you know, where do we begin with this? If we say we're committed to putting up a lockdown facility, and I, I also gotta say, I would imagine whether a person, and I don't know this, but I don't know how a person ends up in jail, yes, they break the law, but I don't know about the intricacies of, when they do that and they've broken into someone's home and stolen something to, to feed their habit, do they, is there a charge that's, that makes them go to jail, or, 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 what's, what you're talking about, Judge, does it mean, well, they're not gonna go to jail, they're gonna go to a lockdown facility? I don't, I don't know that distinction.
Right, initially, it's jail.
They have to go to jail.
Yeah.
So they're going to go there anyway?
They're gonna go to jail first, until the criminal case is, is resolved in one way or another, either with a plea or a trial, but.
Well, they got the figures on what it costs to run our jail. Take away the, the dispatch, the road, and what does that cost? So, you know, put that into what a lockdown facility will cost.
But lockdowns-
Or Todd-
Yeah, well, then what do we do, close the jail?
Things out of the air.
No, but why, I mean, if we're talking about an addition to the jail anyway, in theory, why can't we make part of that addition a treatment facility that is locked down? I mean, if we're gonna go that far, why build an entirely separate structure when we have a lot of space around that?
I mean, we're only gonna go that far if, if you tell us we have to go that far, and I mean that only in the sense-
Yeah, no, no.
No, no, I mean that only in the sense of, right now, we have a, the books, a drawing of alterations out here that would cost about one point two million to accommodate that female population. So by spending that amount of money on, on this first, I guess, the money that would come in from the, from the sales tax, that could be taken care of. In addition, what we had planned to do was to provide the sheriff some additional staffing. I think he would need three, at least, corrections officers, because they're twenty-four seven out there, although I think he didn't want the parking lot paved, so he was gonna use the money to get those three corrections officers now, or fairly soon. Then, to increase road patrol, it was going to be, actually, three, three positions there, because it's twenty-four seven, it was for one additional officer on the road, and I would assume a car, and I, I don't have that figure in front of me, Todd, as to what that would represent. Pardon me?
Around four hundred to four hundred and fifty.
Four, okay, yeah, another four hundred thousand.
That's another million and seven.
Yeah, so we were a million and seven.
For the rehab and the COs to handle it.
Yeah, for the-
Yeah, a million and seven.
I don't know, do you have those figures as to that first?
I have to be in court.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
That's, that's the part we did outline, it's, he needs roughly the three people just in the existing portion.
Yeah.
That was, you know, around four hundred thousand. He needs four point eight people in the new section, which amounts to five people, to staff the remodel section. That combined with the cost was around the one point six. Of course, those estimates are almost a year old now regarding the building end of it. That just gets us to be able to hold sixty-eight female prisoners, which is where we're currently at, so that, that doesn't address anything other than the crowding issue.
Right.
The next question is, if we do do a pod, do we make a medical pod? The sheriff's not all for that, I don't believe.
No.
If we want this lockdown facility, do we put it at the jail, or do we find a separate location? There's debate over which is better there. Of course, the cost is different as well. If you build it totally separate standing and have to transport people and deputies and whatnot, costs are gonna go up. So those are all things, I guess, that kinda need answered.
Well, I'm gonna be real crass and just ask, can I ask both of you, Janet, I mean, your opinions, and whether, I don't know if you, you wanna express it in the sense of imposing it, other than putting it on the ballot for people to vote on it? Or can you just comment on any other aspect?
A lockdown is a jail.
Yeah.
When, when you lock people down, they are incarcerated, and we have to meet certain specifications and qualifications and staffing. And, a- as the judge said, none of this is gonna solve our jail overcrowding problem. But the point is, you gotta keep these people in, in lockdown, whether it's at the jail or a lockdown medical pod at the jail.
So we're not going to have the overcrowding solved, and, but we're going, I mean, if we would go that route?
See, I thought we would have the overcrowding solved, but not the drug.
That doesn't make sense, because first thing we're gonna do is reconfigure the jail, which will provide an additional twenty-eight, was it, or thirty beds for females, you know? So that takes care of that. And then if we do a lockdown facility as part of the jail, say a pod, that's being in jail, and that provides additional beds. So whatever way we go, we're gonna have additional beds.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, I thought you said it would not.
No, you're overcrowding, you're gonna have the same numbers of people in jail, and that's gonna continue to increase.
Right.
And it's only because, as the judge said, you can't let these people out. If they're coming in addicted and you let them out, they either kill themselves, or they commit a crime.
It becomes a treatment facility, similar to Neocap, they're locked down, but you still have the ongoing population of the regular, if there is such a thing, the regular prisoner that might be in there for other-
We're, we're running a detox center now by default.
Yeah.
When we lock people up and put a cash bond on them, and they're heroin addicted, they're going through withdrawal at, at the jail, and our medical people out there are having to deal with it. And they're not properly staffed or equipped to do that. So what you'd be doing would be giving a medical component, an additional medical component, what we're already doing out there. It's not Neocap, we're not gonna sentence people to that after the conviction of a crime.
No.
You gotta figure out what to do with these people pending a decision on where their case is going, you know, is it, is it gonna be a-
But first they go to jail, always, right?
First they go to jail, and that's what the judges are finding, is that we can't arrest them, bring them in arraignment, and then cut them loose. They go out and commit more crimes, or they kill themselves. So, so you've got them locked up, you gotta put them through a detox, and, and then when they're through, through the criminal justice system, then you gotta decide where to put them for penalty.
Well, but does anybody have a cost on something like that? What is that gonna cost? I don't know, Janet, if it's just figure what it's costing you to run the jail, because you're talking about added medical- you're talking about added medical, are you not? I mean, to put people on whatever they have to be on to.
How do you ever expect to get the exact cost anyway, Maureen?
It's what?
How do you ever expect to get the exact cost?
Well, you've got to have an idea.
You had workforce partners out there, we have medical out there now. What are we contracting for now? What does it cost for our food and our medical and our lawyers we send through there?
Yeah, that's.
You've got that.
Right, for that.
And we've got almost two hundred prisoners in there.
Yeah, agreed, but if you're going to talk about detox, you're going to have to have special medical, are you not? I mean, I heard the sheriff say he thought a physician that's actually licensed to do that and a psychiatrist at twenty-four seven would be.
We wouldn't need a psychiatrist twenty-four seven.
If you used whatever money, like Bill Gates came and donated money to you tomorrow, whatever money you're going to use.
I'll call him.
And you use, okay, and you use that to increase the space at the jail, so now you did not have overcrowding. Is there a reason we could not enhance services at the jail for those detox services while people are serving their sentences in that same facility?
I don't know.
So you're not building a separate facility?
Right, right.
That might increase staff, it might increase additional personnel in the sense that you already have psychiatrists and so forth out there, not as often as you would need for any kind of detox program. So usually what you're talking about is increasing the capacity of the jail and then enhancing programs at the jail. So you're simultaneously running a prisoner facility and a detox center because of the same people, the same.
Some of the costs for treatment could be covered by Medicaid now in the jail. I think the law has changed.
Okay, if it has changed, once they're in jail, Medicaid, at least unless there's been a change, will not cover.
Once they're in jail.
Once they're in jail.
Because they're in jail.
Once they've been sentenced.
I thought, I could be really way off.
Yeah, I have to check.
But I thought that the, that there was a change in the law that allows for people that are incarcerated to get Medicaid.
I'll have to check that, yeah. Unless that's.
Well, rehab, I think they can, if they're rehab and not lockdown or something.
I don't know, we need to check it because I'm not sure.
Are we talking about someone that commits a crime, supports their heroin, and then they go to jail and then after so long go to this detox in the same building? Or are we talking about them going directly to lockdown detox?
I'm talking.
That's what we're talking about.
Right. Because they're going to go through withdrawal within hours if they're being locked up. All right, then you have the medical issues presented.
That's happening now.
It's happening now.
It's happening now. And what we would like to enhance it with, if this study can pass, would be to provide additional counseling and treatment while they're in jail. Keep them in jail, not for three months, but for a year or a year and a half if necessary, and give them, first they detox and then give them treatment while they're there with the hopes that some of them, at least, would not go back to drugs when they get out.
Well, then maybe it's back to, I think Denise said this, maybe you just increase the, the contracts that you have or maybe Janet did right now with the medical and with the, I don't know, who does the counseling there? If they're, if they're certified, licensed, whatever psychiatrist? I mean, I don't know that, I don't need to share.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking you're simultaneously serving your sentence while you're getting treatment. So you're not.
So it may not necessitate an additional building. It's just, you're talking about, you're talking about the services now.
Right, I'm saying you're increasing services. Either way, you've got to increase the number of beds at the jail, if only to handle the female population.
Right, right.
You've got to do that.
Yes.
But I'm saying enhance services so you're not necessarily building a whole new, a new facility for people to now go through treatment.
I'm just curious, does anyone know how many counties have a lockdown facility that they fund in addition to a jail?
I mean, only or any of I can think of. You're all facing the same problems.
That's what they do.
It's certainly not unique to you in this county.
Yeah.
I mean, you're trying to take on a problem that is nationwide.
Yeah, they're all facing the same problem with no additional money.
Well.
Well, no, I'm just saying, they're, they're all facing.
No additional money from the state, yeah.
Well, no, yeah, I already.
The state has voiced this problem before.
Right, I know, I already, I voiced that already, preaching to the choir here.
Yeah, I mean, and the other problem is when you've convicted them of the F-five, felony five possession of heroin, the penalties that judges can impose are very limited. Incarceration is not favored in the statutes now for a felony five conviction, you know? Community control sanctions are the preferred and almost mandatory sentence these judges have to give. And that does not include locking you up.
Well, then that means.
What does that mean, Vic?
Adult, adult probation, right?
Probation.
Oh, yeah.
So you're out.
Counseling, you're out of jail, right? So a lot of this has to be pre-trial.
Yeah, if they violate the patrol though, then they can go back to jail.
A judge can, as a sanction for violating community control sanction, impose jail time, right? Because that means they've already gone out, they were offended or accused of dirty.
Right.
Well, you know, it, there's no easy, I'm not looking for easy, easy button solution. I mean, it's a prolific problem, but, but it's easy for the judges to come here, recline, close doors and say, you need to impose this for absolutely. I think that's.
I think Maureen has stated she, she needs the elected officials behind her, she needs the judges behind her to feel somewhat, I don't know if you ever feel better about it, imposing a tax.
Well, to impose it.
Yeah, right.
I still feel very strongly that people should have the opportunity to vote on it.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that too. People will have an opportunity, no matter how we do this, if we impose it because we consider it a critical issue concerning safety. And that's the only reason I would impose it. But if we imposed it, they still have an opportunity for a vote. They can do a referendum and gather the signatures and it will be on the ballot.
That's not a vote, that's a requirement for somebody to go out and collect four thousand signatures.
It gives them an opportunity to have.
It's a burden, it's not a vote.
It gives them an opportunity to have a vote.
It gives someone the burden of going out and collecting four thousand signatures. That's what it does.
It does that too, but it also, when we're saying an opportunity to vote, they do have an opportunity to vote.
But if you put it on the ballot, they can, they should be able to make an informed decision on whether they want to support it. Whether they want to pay that one penny, four dollars spent on taxable items, which I would think most people would.
Well, I think one of the, one of the issues that we have here in trying to make the decision is that if everyone out there knew what we know, I think there's no question it would pass. But we don't have the resources, the money, the manpower to go out and educate the public about this issue between now and November. And we have a critical issue facing us, it's not going to get any better. If this should fail at the, at the ballot, then it's another whole year goes by. We have many more deaths, we still have crowding, we might get the court order, anyway.
Yes, Mike, did you want to say something?
Well, Kathleen, since this seems like more of a roundtable discussion, Kathleen touched on my questions, like if you do put this to the, to the vote in November and it fails, then? The situation doesn't cure itself, the situation continues to go on, you're back where you are now.
And you cannot, the board cannot try again for another year.
Yeah. But you want, in the sense that we already know we have approximately one million dollars that will be available in the general fund because we have an, an extra paid this year that approximated one million. So the first piece of that, why we put it on the ballot, was to be able to, to make the alterations at the jail to accommodate the female population. So that million would be earmarked for that. Or that, if it doesn't pass, we would have that one million. The next thing is, as I was saying, UH is now here and I would think that they have made, and I say they, I hate that, but there have evidently been some ongoing talks about UH expanding or offering detox out here at Robinson. I can't tell you, other than listening to Joel Mory, who might be involved in that, but I think he gave.
Again, it's voluntary, remember, that's not that people leave.
Well, no, I, I know that, it is voluntary, but, but at least there would be a detox, a professionally run or medically supervised detox center.
And there would definitely be a help.
And that's something that we're hearing from people on the task force, whether they're representing an agency or they're representing a family member who has an addiction problem.
But if your jail population continues to grow, I don't, I haven't seen the numbers that you have, but if the jail population continues to grow, you've got a twenty, twenty-five year old facility that is maxed out, no matter what else you talk about, you still have the room at the end.
That's right.
And you're going to be looking at building on to that thing no matter what. People will be walking down the street shooting up cotton balls. It doesn't matter if it's heroin or what, we've still got an overcrowded facility.
So, so do the other approximately, I don't know if all eighty counties do, but.
Apparently not, Georgia's got a special one, I guess.
Except Georgia County, they don't.
Their jail's only ten years old.
Close one of their wings. Yeah, because they didn't have correctional officers.
Their, their jail is only ten years old.
Yeah, they shut down.
Well, you know, the other, but the other, I think that comes into the equation too is, yes, you, you have to, you have to think about that population is ever expanding, but you also have to think about what people are expecting in the community from, in the form of police protection. And while in the cities, they have their own police departments, the bulk of the county is township, and they reland the sheriff. So the sheriff has already said he needs additional personnel, not only in the jail, the corrections officers, but he needs money to put people on the road. So that, that becomes another extraneous cost.
You'll never have enough money to put a cop on every road in every township, right? I mean, that's a silly thing to say because how many do they have out there now?
Well, it's not silly at all, if somebody breaks into your house.
That isn't going to stop it.
Well, it's going to help.
That isn't going to stop.
It's going to, well, what are you saying, Janet?
You'll never be able to put enough deputies on the road.
What's going to stop it?
Plain and simple.
What's going to stop it?
It, it doesn't matter, you're not going to stop it if you have.
You don't want to say.
Ten thousand deputies.
You don't want to say what's going to happen.
Because of the way public gets.
Well, no one is saying we're going to try to put one cop on each road.
I mean, you'll never have enough on the road.
No, of course, no one, no one is saying that we're going to put one cop on every road.
Then it's your answer anyway.
No, but, but we do need additional road patrol.
Nobody's saying you don't need additional, but you'll never have enough money to put enough cops on the road.
The other thing concerning the question that Mike raised about what are we going to do next year, I mean, if this doesn't pass? The thing is that we're not, we're not addressing the problem. It's growing, it's going to keep growing unless we do some intervention one way or another. And the hope is that if we can provide a different opportunity for those who are addicted by locking them up and while they're incarcerated, they detox, give them treatment and keep them long enough until the judges feel that it's safe to let them out, then even offer them sober living if they need it. We have a hope of reducing the need for jail space. And that, to me, is the only hope that we have. If we do nothing, other than just provide additional space, it's not, I think it's going to keep on growing and growing.
But you need to do something.
We need to do something.
But the county, you know, you just said about the sober house, the county's already committed twenty, is it twenty-five thousand a year?
Yeah.
For a sober house. And that, that's fine, it's, it's a good program. But how much is going to fall to the county to provide? I mean, we're going to do everything for everyone. You know, I, I don't know where that ends. I don't know.
Now, that's very limited.
I don't know about the, the needs of the other elected officials.
Right.
You know, you've got the prosecutor sitting here, the auditor is going to come and see us and all while asking for more money, I think.
Well, we do know that the probation department is overloaded.
Yes, right.
And, and probably does need additional money.
And we know our.
Every time, every time a young woman who has children.
Is your underpaid all?
Yeah. Every time a young woman who has children is incarcerated, we have costs for foster care and care of those children.
You really need to make a decision now.
We need, we need to, we as elected officials have a responsibility, in my opinion, to do what we think is in the best interest of the public. And if we're aware of a critical need and we do not act upon it, then I think we're negligent. I know that it's always much easier to say, let's put it on the ballot and let the people decide. And if we have the wherewithal, the money and the manpower to educate the public, then I'm fine with that too. But it's, takes courage to impose a tax. And I'm willing to do that because this is a very small amount of money. It's one penny on every four dollars and the people throw away pennies. I mean, we're not talking about, and then it doesn't include, there's no tax on food and medicine, it will not include boats and automobiles. So, and a lot of the taxes paid for people who come to Portage County but don't live here either. So I just have this hope that if we can do this and offer an alternative, something better than what we're offering now, that we might actually be able to reduce the recidivism and the crime.
If you don't have a plan, Kathleen, we don't even have an agreement on how to proceed. Is that the first collection, you know, what's going to happen? We're earmarking that and saying we're building another pod out there and it's going to be locked down?
No, we know, we.
No, we don't know.
Excuse me, we have that, we've had three public hearings where we have said to the public what we're going to do with the money the first two years. And I would like to add to that, that there would be some, some money set aside for treatment. But we know that we need to do a reconfiguration of the jail, that's number one. We know that we need to have additional space, that would be a pod. We know that we'd like to have additional road patrol, that's four hundred thousand, I think we've talked about already. And we know that after the first two years, we would, and maybe even prior to that, if we could, offer more treatment. This could be done through contract or it could be done through direct employment. But we offer some things now and there is some grant money available for treatment in the jail. I think that's how the treatment is occurring now.
What's the significance of having a drug court in all of this? Because I understand we, we don't officially have one, but we do have one, there's semblance of one.
We don't have a certified drug court, we're not getting any type of funding yet, but Judge Doherty's been working a de facto drug court because she has adopted defendants who are dependent that she monitors very closely, has weekly meetings with, and those are all components of a drug court. And she's trying some alternative, you know, methods of sentencing. So, and in fact, you know, we do.
We do have one.
It isn't yet certified by the Supreme Court.
She's working on that.
But she is.
Well, in doing that, then, does that bring more money?
There's a potential of funding through the Supreme Court for a certified drug court, yes. And that's what she's working on. We've had two, two meetings so far to promote that, you know, we're, we're working on that. But again, a component of that, as she said, is incarceration. And that's where.
You can't get away from that.
No, you can't, you can't. And that's where people say, no, don't lock them up, treat them. Well, that, that's a nice saying, but it doesn't mean anything. You, you can't treat them without locking them up.
Yeah, I know.
And, you know, that's the fallacy there. Kathleen, you spoke of, you know, your courage in imposing a tax, but I have to go back on, how do we let the state get away with taking 1.3 million dollars away from us every quarter?
Because we let those people that serve our interests and conditions to do the opposite of what we want. That's why.
Why aren't we, are we devoting our campaign to them? Where's our money? I mean, 1.3 million would build our, would build our, our pod and, and support our debt service.
Then why do we need a sales tax for five million, Vic? See, that's my problem, a five million forever.
Well, part of the answer to your question is, we cannot change those things, we have[1743.83] we have no power to change. We can only do those things we have the power to do.
That's right.
That's why we're in this dilemma.
And they put you in this situation. You're doing exactly what they, they want you to do.
Yeah, meaning the legislature.
Yes. They're pushing the tax burden on you guys locally while they sit back with a two billion dollar surplus and pop their button that they've reduced our tax.
So, what we do, what we do to tell them off, to get revenge, or whatever it is that we're thinking of, is let our people die. Eight, in one day, eight overdoses, one of them died. We don't have many choices.
You can't put that on yourself. And then, how are you taking on the ills of society?
If we do nothing, it is our responsibility. We're, we're the ones that are elected here to make a change, to do things, do what we can. We have to use our best judgment to do it. I know that it's, for, no elected official ever wants to impose a tax. No one does. So, if you're willing to do that, it does take courage.
You're not gonna tax your way into solving the heroin epidemic.
No, we're not, but we can provide treatment, which you are not doing now. We can incarcerate them for a longer period of time so that they can have additional treatment. So, we have a half of a hope that when they get out, they won't be coming back.
Well, unfortunately, that hasn't worked either. Many of the overdoses have been...
We haven't done that.
Have been on a neocap.
Right. How long does neocap take, then?
Up to six months.
Six months. Maybe the answer is we have to keep them a year.
Yeah.
Why?
Sentencing doesn't allow it. Sentencing does not allow it.
A drug court would allow it.
Felony five is a felony five, that's what I'm...
But if the, if the whole purpose of the drug court is to allow for alternate sentences...
Even the drug court can only sentence for a maximum period of time, and that doesn't go beyond one year.
And I... So, then they're on probation if they don't meet probation, and they go right back to jail.
That includes probation, that's everything.
I think Judge Poland even told us that the, the rate of, is like five percent, only
five percent do not reuse, if that's the proper words.
It's very low. It's very low. It's a, it's a, it's a terrible drug, and it's a terrible addiction that, um, a good pa, a good number of the overdoses we attend are people that have been through some form of either private or court-ordered rehabilitation, or even neocap.
Listening to you is, it makes me so sad because it sounds so hopeless. So, give us some suggestions about what you think we can do.
I, I just think it's a mistake to take on all the ills of society and think that we're gonna tax our people out.
What'd you say, taxing them what?
It's not, it's not unique to you that you're, you're banging your head against a wall here. I mean, you're not unique in that. This is a problem that's nationwide. Nobody has found a solution yet.
Wouldn't you say taxing them out of what?
Taxing the people out.
I said, if you're not gonna tax people into solving the heroin problem.
That, we're, well, we have to do something. I mean, we can't, we can't, as good responsible leaders, sit here and do nothing when we know that in one day...
Well, you can't, as a responsible leader, put it on the ballot.
Excuse me, let me finish my sentence. Uh, as responsible leaders, sit here and do nothing when last Wednesday, we had eight overdoses. We've been reading it in the paper all the time. We see the obituaries. It's heartbreaking. It's affecting so many families. We have to do something. And, um, providing additional jail space is one thing we can do.
Well, I, I'm aware that we had, we had seven in one day. Many of us had no contact with the criminal justice system. And I think two of the ones that did had completed their time in the criminal justice system, so...
And they came back.
We are, we're, exactly. We're a small part of the problem, and we should do what we can. We have to have additional beds out there, there's no question about that. And in, in building those additional beds, we have to provide additional services to, to meet the people we're bringing in with heroin addictions.
And where do we get that money, Vic? I mean...
From the state. He's saying we need...
The state is...
Saying the state's...
They're gonna get our millions back.
But how do we...
I'd like to have our money back.
Yeah, yeah, time. When did you make the determination to do the additional beds first? You know?
No, we don't...
Well, that's in the plan, to do additional beds, yeah. Proceed.
And that's that program.
Do no matter what.
It's just a matter of painful. I, I do have a question before we leave, Denise. In reading your email, it appeared that we may need to do new public hearings should we choose to impose. Is that for a...
I don't, no, I don't think you do. I think your notice of your first hearing was very broad, cited the statute, therefore I do not think you need to do a, a new public hearing.
Can I ask one question? Did you ever consider lowering the time period instead of just putting it on and leaving it on?
Indefinitely, yeah.
Putting it on for a specific purpose, the jail pod or whatever, for a number of years, and that's it?
Well, the sheriff actually said that after one of the meetings. He thought that it should not be, uh, put on indefinitely. Now, that's when we were considering, you know, putting it on, um, the, the quarter of a percent and letting people vote on it.
And I agree with that.
Yeah.
But what Todd has brought up is the ongoing expenses with the additional pod and the staff and everything. Maybe we just wait and see what happens? I mean, I don't know.
Every cost you're talking about is staffing costs. Those don't go away.
We all know that. Everybody in this room knows that.
But those don't go away.
But that doesn't mean you should look high in the sky to begin with, if you'll get nothing.
If you put it for five years, in five years, you're stuck with a five billion dollar payroll. Then it's gone.
Well, the one thing we can do...
Does win the war. Your avenue does not win the war.
The one thing that we can do, if it's a continuing tax, at any point where we feel that we no longer need that, we can, without going to the ballot, I believe, we can make a motion.
You could repeal that tax.
Pardon?
You could repeal the tax at any point.
Yeah, we can repeal it.
Or reduce it.
One penny out of four dollars doesn't...
Or reduce it.
Five million of your boss.
Yeah. I still don't think it should be imposed. I, you think it should be imposed?
You know, I'm, I'm really torn on this. I really am. I mean, I, I agree that the voters need a choice, but I also agree that, personally, I don't think it'll pass. I, I...
I, I feel, I hope that it will pass.
Well, you know, I hope that it does pass, too, but, um, 'cause people just look at it as another tax. I mean, they don't, they don't have a particular, I mean, a lot of people, let's face it, they look at these people that take drugs as just losers and just let them die. I mean, I've heard people say that, so...
Until their house is broken into, you know.
The ballot's gonna be...
Well, but that's a different issue, if your house been broken into.
Well, see, there should be the, probably the Ravenna tax.
Sure.
Well, I don't know either.
I'm just talking about levies that are already coming in.
Right, right. The library, Garrettsville, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of levies.
Didi.
Yeah, Didi.
Yeah, well, you're right, there will be. So then, but it comes down to, so every time there's a need, you, you know, do you impose on people because the state's sitting on two billion dollars?
Well, then what do we do? How do we get that money?
We never, never impose unless we feel, well, it's, unless we feel it's so critical that we...
But there's going to be continued critical needs, Kathleen. I, I agree with you.
Well, people dying is a lot more critical than not being able to hire enough people to work in various departments.
Well, that doesn't negate people dying. I think Vic just said some of those deaths were, they weren't even in the criminal system. They were...
It's just a matter of time.
Whatever they were cashing money...
They're going to steal, and they're gonna be in the system.
No, no, I'm just saying, they weren't even in the system. These were people that, however they supported their habit, were, what's the word, shooting up and overdosed. I mean, I, I don't even know the right verbiage to use, in the sense of how people feed their habits. But I do know, if your home is broken into, you're gonna want a police officer right there, right there and there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And you're gonna want the prosecutor to prosecute him to the fullest extent of the law, and you're gonna want the jail, uh, the, the judge to sentence him, and then adult probation's gonna come in and say, and we just heard that.
Everybody needs more money.
We need more...
Everybody needs more money.
Yeah, we need more probation officers.
There's no staff.
And again, I think that's, we don't really have, we don't have a plan. We have everyone coming here saying, "Do this, impose it, do it," but none of them are offered. Here, here's a viable plan, here's how you do this. We'll have three more probation officers, we'll have five more police officers, everybody's, "Give me the money, give me the money, or you mandate it, and let me have the money, and then, then I'll decide how to spend it."
Oh, I understand what you're saying, Maureen. I do, I understand.
No, I mean, to me, that's an, we're not doing something right there when we do that. We're, you know, we're...
You can't win, Maureen. We're winning in this game.
No.
If the board wants to put this to the ballot, it does need to decide by August fifth, which really means next week.
August the fifth?
Yeah.
Well, you have to.
Or...
The Tuesday, fourth is Tuesday.
Did you have something for us that you were gonna give us on a, you know, in a sense of, I guess, a semblance of an outline of a plan of what we would have to do?
Well, that was, we worked on it...
Earmark money for different things?
Talking about that. Um, I mean, that's one of my issues, is without a plan...
Yeah.
...we put this money in place, it's gonna go very quickly.
Right, right.
Because the county already has, and there will be very little left.
Right.
What I was gonna say, though, is if the board wants this to go to an election, it needs to decide by next week. If the board would decide that it wants to impose it, it could forego the election route, in which case you have until mid-October to impose it and still be in collections in January. You have until mid-January to impose it and begin collections in April, which is what we were anticipating anyways. So, if you wouldn't go the impose route, you do have time still, you don't have to impose it now, you do still have time to say, "Hey, if you can come together with a decent plan by mid-October, we'll impose it then. If you can come with a plan by mid-January, we'll impose it then." We already have not anticipated collections occurring until April first, as it is. Um, the only, the only urgency is in deciding whether you want it to go to elections or to be imposed. But if you want it to be imposed, that decision does not have to happen quickly pursuant.
But Todd, it frustrates me to hear you say that we have no plan. We had three public hearings where we talked about the plan for the first two years. I don't understand when you say we have no plan. That's frustrating.
Well, our plan includes building a regular jail pod. And what I'm hearing at these meetings, and what I heard at the public meeting, and what I'm hearing at these treatment meetings, is that's not necessarily what people favor. And that's, again, we do have the plan of doing that.
They wanna lock down treatment.
I, I, for sure, and we, and we're going to do this regardless of the tax, for sure we need to do the jail remodeling and add the five correction officers. The question becomes, what more do we do from there? Our plan includes building a pod, but there seems to be a lot of debate as to whether that's the route to go, or whether we should be doing a different route.
But then, we do have a plan, Todd.
No, we don't. Excuse me.
You need architects for your planning, though.
Excuse me, we do, we do have a plan. Now, we might want to revise that plan.
For the part that we have that we can do.
But to say we have no plan is really frustrating to me because we do have a plan. We've had three public meetings whereby we've talked about that plan. And I think today, even hearing the conversation, that probably the likelihood is that we're gonna build a pod. Whether we use that pod, part of it as a treatment center, or bring in outside people, we do need to lock them down. I mean, and the most inexpensive way to lock them down is to add to the jail.
Sheriff said to us, "If you make these alterations at the jail, I don't think you need a pod for the next, maybe, five years or so." So, that, that has impact in the sense of, back to the point of imposing it or not. I mean...
But you truly need an architect to do that redesign, that rehab.
Well, we, we have, we had an architect.
Well, you need an estimate, right?
We haven't. I'm gonna be really direct and crass and ask Janet and Vic your opinion on imposing it. You're not gonna say, neither one of you.
I would not ever vote for a continuous sales tax at five million a year, whether it's imposed or not. But yes, I do think I would impose it for fifteen million for three years, and I would show then, after that, exactly what I'd done with that money every year, how much it costs to build that re, and I would rehab the part, not build a whole pod yet. I would rehab that for thirty prisoners.
For what, Janet?
Thirty. I would rehab what Dale Kelly suggested, and you brought in a guy that gave you a rough estimate to rehab that section.
Yeah, that was one point two million.
For thirty. Well, yeah, but that's not a good figure to actually get into it. That's the problem with that. And that's the same thing we got into it when we were building a jail.
Yeah.
You know? But if you have a figure, okay, and they tell you it's one point two or whatever...
One point two.
So, then you got your five million coming in the first year.
Yeah.
You can get that done, you can take care of your extra COs, and if you need more road patrol, you can do that. But legally, you don't have to have road patrol.
Well, no, but I think...
But nobody's saying you don't need more.
Right.
But maybe you don't need everything you think you do.
Yeah.
And then you work towards your detox problem, 'cause I think that definitely needs to be done. And I think when Becky gets the approval of the Supreme Court, and I could be totally wrong...
She'll have it.
You can get some extra money to help with the detox. And that starts you out, and that's a decision, because your leaders...
So, you think...
Three years, you know, that much money coming in for three years. And I don't care if Todd doesn't get all of his payroll programmed out for five years. He's got it for three.
Yeah.
And maybe, like you, other things you've discussed it, disgusted.
Disgusted, no, that's fine.
Prosecutors' problems, my problems, adult probation problems, I think the judges have enough people. They should work...
They don't think so.
I got rid of five employees. He has less employees, you know?
Yeah.
I don't pay all my directors eighty thousand a year, though, or ninety. See, there's another thing. Can you do more with less?
Sure. Absolutely, you can.
I, well, you already got people coming to you, I've heard, that want more employees. I've already seen raises go through for some people. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Three years, impose it, Maureen. You're a big girl. We've got good backbones. I'll defend ya.
No.
With your name Frederick, you and I could run for office and get seventy percent. I not always have.
No, it isn't about that. Honest to God, Janet is...
You're the only one running next year, though. Come on.[1527.62]
I'm running for cover.
You're a big girl.
I'm running for my life.
I'm going for years, Maureen.
I'm running for my life.
Three years, that's all.
Mr. Valucci.
Oh, then he won't tell you the same thing. You'll complain about the state. Well, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the state can keep their damn money. Then I'm not obligated to them, and I can tell them so.
Okay.
You know?
Very well said.
The problem, Janet, is the state's getting that money from us in our income taxes. And when we agreed to a state income tax, we agreed that they'd give some of it back to us.
I don't pay as much of a lot as a lot of people in this room, so I'm not going to worry about it.
But Vic, we don't have the authority to change that. If we don't even have, if we don't even have the money and manpower to do the sales tax, how are we going to change the complexion of the state?
But that's my point. The people in the state, because of what the state has done, the counties, the schools, the libraries, the cities, they're all pushing new taxes and levies, income taxes, in school, I believe. And that's all to make up for the difference of what the state took away from us. And I think the people are fed up with it.
And the state is doing that because they want to do away with the income tax, which is the fairest tax.
Which is the fairest tax, and which, when we agreed to pass that state income tax, the promise of the state was we would get our share back. And that was called a look at government funds.
Right.
And they unilaterally cut that in half, and that's the position we're in. Not just us, the townships, the cities, the schools, the libraries. The city of Ravenna passes a quarter percent income tax to fix their roads. Because all of us county employees are not paying, even though we didn't get the vote on it.
They didn't get the vote on it. There you go. It was imposed.
So I think the people are sick and tired of more levies and more taxes.
Well, I think you're right. People have hit a saturation point. No matter how rational they are, and what they feel in their hearts they want to do, I think they have all hit their saturation point.
And we agree 100 percent. What the state is doing is really very harmful. And if every person who were directly affected, every government employee, every teacher, every parent, and every library person, and those who use the library, would all vote appropriately at the next election, we could change it. That's not going to happen. We can't change that.
But look at all the benefits government tax, you know, that is supported by the tax year benefits. You know, don't even get me on that. My husband's been in the private sector. My retirement compared to his social security and his IRA accounts from business is not what I will get after only working so many years.
Yeah.
You know, come on. There needs to be a readjustment. And we'll never win this fight because I've talked to those stupid Republicans down there in Columbus. And they told me, we're not getting that money back, so quit whining. And I'm serious.
That's exactly right. And the only way...
And that's what the governor says.
That's right. And the only way we'll ever get it back is to have different people down there.
Well, yeah, and then we'll have a zero carryover like what left us.
And we can't let...
So you can't win.
We can't have a zero carryover.
You can't give it all away.
You know, on a positive, on a positive note, this morning, when we were at the Porters Development Board, we talked a little bit about the horrific heroin problem, and some of the avenues we had available to us, what we were dealing with at the county level. And it was, it was really an eye-opener for me because I had at least three people come up afterwards. And I'm talking about the private sector people, people at Amatec, Mr. Is it Wittenberger?
Reman Finch.
Yeah, and Mr., can't think of his name now.
He's got a wonderful county.
Yeah, from the skipper group.
Oh, he is so positive.
Yeah, but no, from the skipper group. No, but I'm talking about the people, the, I hate to say the nerves and the sugars, but the private sector people who said, you know, Maureen, we really had, I can't say no idea, but we didn't have an idea. It was that...
Matt said he was willing to help with it, however he could.
Yes, yeah, Mr. ...
Matt French, I know him. He's a good guy.
But no, yeah, I'm saying, they really didn't. It wasn't, you know, this problem didn't touch them personally. But they, I think it was a real eye-opener for them to say, to realize, oh, my goodness, it is a prolific problem, and we need, as a representative of the private sector, we need to do something about it.
Yeah, right.
So that was encouraging. And one of the things I talked about with one gentleman right after, he came up to me and he said, I used to, you know, I owned this company, but I sold it, and corporate, this corporate entity now owns it. And he said, I had a call from a friend of mine this week, and she asked me, would you put on this young man, and he has just been released from jail, and he is an addict, but he has it under control, would you put him on the payroll? And he said to me, you know, Maureen, had I still owned the company solely, I would do that. I would do that because I have faith in her, and I would, I would give this young man a chance. But the corporation owns it now, and they won't do that.
He's a liability.
They won't hire an addict. And I told him, and he said, from what you've said today, he said, I'd like to be able to call you in about a week or so, when the corporate representatives are here, and I'd like them to come in and talk to you. I'd like you to, to tell them, convey to them exactly what you've done here this morning. And I said, you know, I'm sure we'd do that. We'd be happy to do it. And what I'd like to suggest is that we maybe have somebody like Valerie Root, who unfortunately lost her son to addiction, and who's instrumental in getting Root House started, and that is a sober house. And I've heard her say so many times, you know, these people, when they, if they can combat the addiction problem, they have to have jobs. They have to have jobs. Otherwise, they're not going to be able to sustain themselves. They can't get an apartment. They can't start talking about or realizing independent living and keeping that bit of a monkey off their back. So I think it's important that we do that, that we try to influence the decision-makers that are heads of corporations to say, while I can understand you don't want to put somebody on a machine you just paid a million dollars for that has an addiction problem.
Right.
There is, there is something you can do for them in a trust factor. You can, you know, provide them with a job opportunity that's going to try to help make them whole.
Maureen, you're late with four hour meeting.
I'm sorry.
You don't want to consider...
This is the best county we have, and we have many firsts that other counties have never had. So you can't send, you know, you can't say any louder than I can about this wonderful county. I mean, we're one of the best out of 88. And nobody will ever convince me it's any different. And we got good people running it.
They said that this morning.
So let's make a decision and move on.
You know what, what she said, though, that is kind of a compromise. I mean, if we impose it, but limit the time.
Yeah.
That's a compromise.
You've got to do something.
Yeah.
Whether you want to or not.
And the thing, the thing is about this drug court, if we do get money, I mean, obviously, that's an if. And I know your point, Todd, about we're still going to have the staff, but I think that's going to make it much more plausible to the public.
He's only been in county government for what, two years now? He has no idea. He just lives in our counties. So don't worry about his vote.
No, but hopefully, though, no, hopefully too, Janet, UH now being here will, hopefully they will address that detox problem.
Well, you know, like Matt French said this morning, he said, I'll do anything to help you. He said, what we have to do, there's a crisis in front of us.
Yeah.
We have to address that crisis now, but what we really have to do is start getting to the root of the problem.
Right.
And he said, I'm willing to go out and talk to students and schools. We have to educate the kids before they get there, and we have to, we have to change the way we've done things. It's not working.
Can we agree that we would impose it for three years? And then, at that time, if we feel we need to, we can put it on?
I think based on what Janet said, if we can get her figures. Can you recap those again?
What figures?
No, I mean, you're just spewing out what the three years would do, and I liked it.
$15 million?
Five million a year.
No, it wouldn't be five, would it?
Yeah.
For three years, five million a year for three years.
I see. The same amount.
Do your piece.
You had said, I thought, some point...
Piece to a piece to a piece.
Yeah, maybe not as much. I thought maybe you were suggesting, don't put on the quarter.
You don't like the...
That's such a small amount.
No, that's the smallest you can put on.
Instead of paying a penny for every $4, they'd pay maybe a half a penny, you know?
No.
No, no, I was just thinking. That might be a possibility.
I mean, put a time limit on it. I think that's your key.
Yeah. Well, even the sheriff, even the sheriff said that at one of the...
That's how we got it passed before.
What was the time limit you put on it before, Janet?
Till it was paid for.
I mean, the sales tax, did you say three years, five years? What'd you...
No, three years.
Till it was paid for by the debt. We had a debt on it.
Okay.
Well, and that's a very big, yeah, and you would, you would keep on that.
And we had architectural figures.
How long did we have on the...
No, but you're right about the debt service, too. You have to be concerned about that.
Because we got a lot of grants from the EMA and everything in the jail.
It was like seven years?
It was less than that.
But you would be absolutely right on the debt service.
A little over $8 million, something. Because we got quite a bit of money from the EMA section.
Well, can we agree that we would be willing to do that?
I think we're getting there.
I think, I would, yes.
I would. It's a short time, it's a small amount of money.
I mean, we don't care for me. Todd Happy, you're not, really, as long as we can cover the problem. Like Todd Happy, but I just wanted to do yours.
I also would like the judges to have a press conference with General 3, 5, and 8, and explain this to the public.
And supporting you, because they said they would, didn't they? Yes, they did. I wasn't...
Oh, no, they, they said they absolutely positive. Judge Ozwick even said she would, she would throw herself in front of a bulldozer.
Ozwick and, and the three, Poland, Fairhouse.
Judge Doherty, Judge Doherty.
You'd need to get Pittman in there, and Burger. Burger sees the drugs out of juvenile. Pittman needs to be there, too.
Yeah, well, I don't, Judge Pittman wasn't here at the time, nor was Judge Burger, but those four were.
I don't care about Burger.
No, I'm just saying those four were.
If, if we'd be willing to do it, and we pass the resolution by July 28, the collection would begin October 1st.
Is that something we want to do today? Do we want to do this? We do.
Yeah.
So I'm going to be the holdout. What happens if we have a descending vote, which happens?
We can't do it.
No, it has to be all of us.
Has to be unanimous. It's why we pay the big bucks.
So shall I make a motion?
I don't know, so I'm going to vote on it today. I want to see those figures. I most likely will support it.
Well, it's up to you. Shall I make a motion or not?
You can, but I'm not going to vote on it today.
Why would I make the motion?
You've got the 21st, the 23rd, and the 28th.
I want to take that on the three years and see what, we have $5 million for three years.
You've got another week.
Yeah, no, I know it's not...
It's nothing but a spreadsheet.
Maybe we can get the judges all in here on Tuesday.
To get straight is what you're going to accomplish with that $15 million.
Yes, yes, agreed.
Well, like Janet said, she liked it October 1st.
You went back for the shoulders, everybody, right?
The public house, the money.
You're going to do the rehab.
That was built a jail, though. That was a capital.
Yeah, exactly.
The first two years, it's 100 percent, 100 percent.
Yeah, I think, why don't we bring that figure back, Todd?
But then we want to do treatment.
That's people.
Well, I think what we want to do is, what the first is fund that, that rehab at the jail. And the, and the officers, the three officers, you know, the first part of that, in other words, we're going to work backwards here. We're talking about $5 million for three years, and see what's the best plan we can come up with. And I would assume that that means another potential pod. That would have to be the debt services, what that would cost. But that renovation to the existing building is...
You want the meeting to start?
Was $1.2. I think Janet was $1.2.
You want to deal with the personnel issue?
You can do a lot of things with the money. The key is picking what you are going to do.
Yeah.
Can we go in the executive session?
And that's, that's a good thing, that we can get...
I've got the agreement.
But let's, let's work that up and then present it to the judges also. Is that all right?
Sure.
So that we know what we're going to spend it on. Thank you, Mrs. Esposito, for the suggestion.
Well, you can always close the jail. You know, you'll have a bill. Just can't play my name in three years.
They did that, they did that in summer.
Matt French is hoping that in years to come, we can make the jail something else. I mean, he's a very optimistic person.
I know, Matt. That ain't going to happen. That isn't going to happen. That ain't going to happen.
So we're scheduling on Tuesday?
Yes, yeah. Okay, by then, when...
You know what you're doing, Todd? I mean, you know what, what you're...
I'm not aware right now. They want me to do anything. You want me to...
Just do it. Well, I'm thinking more. Three, three years, $5 million. It comes off then.
I want to do this, for the other side.
I have a suggestion.
On your rights.
That's true. I appreciate it.
Todd, I have a suggestion. Stop saying we don't have a plan.
I don't...
I'm very determined.
It is?
We're going to have, we're going to have to give Mrs. Esposito what she wants.
I'm going to ask for a brief personnel executive session to finish the personnel issue of this house this morning.
I made a motion regarding the executive session.
A second?
For discussion concerning personnel issues.
Is this this one right here?
The same personnel issue we talked about this morning.
We'll call, please, Zee.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
I'm answering.
Is this the gentleman that's upset?
I have no idea what you're holding. I'm sorry.
Yes.
What is that? Maybe a little later today would be...
We're only an hour, 10 minutes late.
Bad time to come. I don't want to even ask for anything. But I love you guys. You guys got a bad problem, I know.
You're never going to have everything the way you want it.
Ever.
Ever.
We've canceled the tour of the building.
Well, I'm going to tell you, Todd, I'm not going to be able to go.
That was a good thing.
There's no good answer, Vicki. No matter what you do, there's no good answer.
You know, you're right. I mean, there's no palatable answer to everybody.
No. We can't make everybody happy all the time. It's terrible.
But I would ask that as we present our topic to you, that you give consideration to Janet's contribution at your last meeting. Give us credit for that. Because had that been for Janet, I think she helped the board.
You'd still be talking. You'd still be talking.
We got a serious concern, I'm telling you. And I'll, Brian, I'll give you the floor because you like to talk.
Well, I mean...
You like to mine.
You know, as I think, you know, we all know, more and more things are going in the way of technology in the county, not just the things related to our upgrade, but all of our security systems, camera systems. And we're now in this age called the Internet of Things. They say there's over a trillion things to be hooked up to the Internet. So, I mean, we're hooking all kinds of things up, like refrigerators for the health department to be able to monitor the temperature for vaccines. So in addition to all of the things that IT always does, a lot, you know, our role with technology in the county continues to grow. We're providing more 25/4 by 7 service to the Sheriff's Department and other county operations. One of our employees is retiring September 1st of this year. And so we do find the need for, to replace him. And our immediate need is to, we would like to hire somebody immediately to get them in before he departs, so that we can get that person acclimated and going, so that there's no lag time between him leaving and having a new person on board to take on the continuation of our support and the things that we're working at implementing. So our overall plan is to, we'd like to bring in, you know, Phil Don's position early. And we've done a cost analysis of what it would take to bring that person in prior to November 1st, or, actually, September 1st.
Starting Monday.
Starting Monday. We would need an additional $6,945.78.
No, that's benefits and everything. That's what, 19 and a quarter of pay is what I figured.
Yeah.
As of September 1st?
No, as of Monday to September 1st. It'd be $69,4578. And then Don is leaving September 1st. Okay?
Same pay.
It's a little bit higher. But this is the start.
A little bit favoring this person.
Yeah, not much difference.
Between Don and him, I'm saying.
We're starting him out lower.
Yeah, we're starting him lower because he doesn't have the experience.
Yeah, because I mean...
We never start everybody out a club.
So it's extra, extra now to September 1st, but what are those savings from September 1st to September 30?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Extra.
And, I mean, to your point, I mean...
Well, yeah, we're not going to...
They would be on probation.
I don't waste money and take money.
You bring up a good point. They would be on probation, you know, through the remainder of the year. So we would be saving, there would be...
You wouldn't be advancing them until they...
There'd be, there would be a cost savings. I mean, not, we're close to covering the cost, but there would be... Right. Looking out much longer, though, we do see the need to hire another position. One of the things that I've, I've realized as I come close to being here at the county 25 years, is that most of my staff has been here that long as well. And it's great to be able to retain employees and organizational knowledge. But of course, as we know, with the longer you're here, the more you accumulate in terms of sick leave and vacation leave. And so with eight people, just with vacation leave alone, we almost lose a full-time position in the year. I mean, because that's 40 some weeks almost of vacation alone, not including sick or personal leave. So long-term...
Can I kind of dovetail off of that statement?
Sure.
We don't have any overtime. Todd has taken that all away. It's Todd's fault. Sorry, Todd. But let me tell you, I have asked Brian lately, once in a while, send me something when you're out at 2:00 AM in the morning, out at the Sheriff's Department, when you're out at 11:47 at the Sheriff's Department, when, um, one day you were here on the 24th, we had to send John out. Because you see the three people that are on 24/7?
Yeah.
I mean, we're running these people to death. And so when they go out, we give them flex time. Well, what does that do to our time here? Because there's all the work going on with the, all the upgrades that are going on, installing all the computers, you know, that are brand new, and they're not all done yet because we can't do them all at the courthouse until the upgrades are done up there because they don't work good. We don't have any overtime. And when I sign off for people to take that as time off, we lose time on the job. And that really has me concerned. I turned around and spent one and a half, one, let's see, 1.5, 100 and, 100 and, what did I do with that? $1,000 some on overtime finally, because it was ridiculous. Couldn't continue to do that. Now, you know, I have the real estate assessment fund. I picked more up in my real property, because Todd won't let me have any general fund too much over there. Well, that's scary. Because I'm at my max for ITS. I have just got almost $200,000. I gave, you know, they got a 1.5 from the general fund for raises. I gave them a couple of them more. And it came out of real estate assessment. And I'm as tight as I can be in real estate assessment. I picked up John. I picked up some extra stuff. I picked up GIS Joe, you know...
And to be able to justify it.
To justify it, okay? To kind of help supplement the general fund, because I understand your problem with the general fund. You know, I'm not complaining about what you do. You do with it.
And there is work that our staff does for REA.
Maybe I'm paying them more than what they do for REA.
And, and, you know, and the county benefits from that. I mean, we send, and I'll share it with you, I'll email it to you. We were able to get all the 911 calls for the past year in the county and map it out. Incredible showing, and, you know, you're, right, you're aware of our, you know, the other initiative related to 911 in the county, which helps everyone to see what's going on. But that came through our GIS.
I mean, we give a lot of GIS. We give Nikki, we've saved him a lot of money on the maps he's done with GIS, and I haven't charged anybody for any of that. The only thing I have is what the tax map doesn't do anymore, and that's minimal, because Rob's gone and the new girl can't do that. So we're doing it in-house. Probably going to have to hire somebody part-time or something to help offset this pretty soon, once development starts increasing like it has been. I'm sorry, Brian.
So what we, you know, again, what we want to address, we'd like to get somebody in here immediately to replace Don and get them acclimated and going. We'd like to take two of our existing positions and promote those to a higher-level position based on new and more complex responsibilities and undertakings related to those positions. And then we want to hire a new additional position to be able to, you know, meet our staffing needs, provide ongoing operation and support for the department.
I'll tell you, my concern is, I just seen where an individual left ITS that Job and Family Services had. And I've got two employees that do more than what that individual did. That individual was getting paid sixty-three thousand. Now, if I lose one of my employees that goes there, that's, you know, higher technology than what the individual that left, I'm going to be very upset, because I can't pay these two individuals sixty-three thousand. I am really concerned about that.
You wouldn't, obviously, if they could.
Their salary was, oh, I knew you were going to ask me that, and I had it in my head.
Well, no, I'm just saying that that would be a good thing for them.
Under, not, almost right around fifty. Oh, no, it wouldn't be, because then we'd lose them, and we need them worse than they lose them, because the state will only allow them, whoever's over there, the state runs that system. That's a state system. We run the county system, all of us.
That's Sean and John, other two there. They get around fifty.
Not quite.
Not yet.
Not quite. They're going to go there.
Those two positions, we go.
They're going to have to, because it's worth it.
Would that, you know, if you could do that, at least for those two, and you're hiring a part-time, I mean, replace the one now, but the other two moving them up, would that negate you losing them, say, to this other position?
Oh, I, who would ever know?
That position is overpriced.
No, you know, you wouldn't know. The sad part about, well. I did have, I did have, I did have staff apply for that job previously when it was open. So. Under Director Jonathan.
Okay, do we have a dollar amount somewhere?
Well, the immediate need, and I could, we could get, Jen and I could get dollar amounts for the pay increases for the additional position. The most urgent thing would be, again, moving forward on the, the filling, filling Don's position and getting somebody in here.
What is his termination date?
His termination date is September first. Although I will say also, he does have sick leave and vacation leave, and does have the right to, to use that in accordance with the personnel policy. So, and he is.
So if you got to do it, start that person right away.
Monday, we want to start him, before Don leaves.
Is this coming Monday? Oh, you have someone, okay. I would think we should at least do that.
I mean, that's what we really need bad.
And we will get numbers on together for Todd on the other, so we can put something to come back.
Is that okay?
Yes.
I want to be sure I know what we're doing.
Just the first.
We'll make sure. We're hiring a replacement for Don Weber.
Right, Weber.
And we're.
Would you, you as commissioners are agreeing to provide additional appropriation to IT's budget so that Janet can do the hiring of that person? Does that make sense? And we're not hiring or doing anything else, but what you're agreeing to is the appropriation, so that they can hire them. Training period.
They know that. Well, that one is a must.
I just want to clarify our decision, we have several questions here. One is that we would agree to the new hire, replacing Don Weber.
The money for the new hire.
Yes, and also, you need to get the dollar amount to us concerning the promotion of the two, John and Sean.
We will do that.
I'll take care of one of them. See, I need general fund for another, for one of them.
We'll also compute how much money we're going to save, at least through the end there.
Oh, that's good, we love, we have, we love to see. Well, no, we, that happened with, just recently with Judge Delano. I mean, it wasn't a raise.
No, but she, you know, because she talked to me about that. You know, and that's rational. I mean, you know, all these people that gave raises and all this stuff, we know all about it. You know what I mean? You can't keep any secrets, because it comes through us.
We're not trying to keep secrets, we do all of it.
But there is one thing that my staff is very upset about, blenders for smoothies.
Yeah, I saw, yesterday Joanne said that, unbelievable.
Because the next thing is, we need a card to go buy the stuff, what goes into smoothies? I've never made them, but we have, we're going to need a credit card to go buy the stuff.
You've got to wonder about.
No, that's the next thing.
You've got to wonder about, who would have thought? I mean.
You don't want us to.
Do they do it as a joke?
No.
Or are they serious?
No, they not, it's not a joke. It's not a joke.
Okay, we're all talking.
Thank you.
But it's a fun topic, you've got to admit it.
Okay, we're going to do a journal entry. So that. I think our six. I think it's six thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Right, Brian?
No, I will bring the appropriation.
Somebody said that to me.
Do this. You're going to do it.
I don't drink booze, I get drunk. No, but thank you. Thank you, thank you. I don't know how to keep your sense of humor up here.
You need a, they need a budget from you, and I will bring that as a resolution.
Did you hear that? He will bring it back as a resolution. Brian and Mrs. Esposito, he will bring it back as a resolution.
We will.
We'll do that. All right, thank you.
Do you want to sign my year next, my yard next year, if you impose? Tony'd be glad to have one of your signs.
Will he?
He has Doge and everybody else's.
All right, I'll, I'll hold you to that.
But you never had one of mine in your yard.
Oh, yes, I did.
Okay.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Okay, I'm not doing a journal entry, right?
A red, a red one, and it had the black and the white, yes, I did. I probably still have it.
Because Todd's bringing it back, is that the way you're seeing it?
Yes, but we're doing it.
Okay.
Can you all, what was that for the ITS?
Pardon me?
Oh, you know, Janet, when you, Brian was mentioning that you could map the nine-one-one calls, that would be, I think, an interesting thing for you to bring to the Township Trustees' quarterly meeting. Do you think they'd be interested in seeing where the nine-one-one calls are coming from? Of course, they would know in their jurisdiction.
We've done it for fire department calls, did you know that?
But that would be a nice, that would be a nice piece of information.
Some of it for stops for Bill Steiner, but he decided he wanted his own stuff.
No, but I mean, the nine-one-one calls, that would be interesting to the trustees, I'm sure.
We can handle that. We'd be delighted. But that saved Mickey a lot of money on those road nights. You would never believe that.
I'm sure.
Wait a minute, the new hire, is Todd coming back with a journal entry, is that what's?
We can do a journal entry indicating that we will fund.
Yes.
The, those three things.
The person that's going to replace whatever his title.
And then the promotion.
The IT specialist, yeah.
Just one of the IT specialist promotions, yeah. She's going to pick up the other one with the journal fund.
Okay. Which employee?
The journalist, can I?
She's going to pick up John.
Okay, so.
Oh, so we're doing a journal entry for those three?
Just, just one.
Just one of the IT.
Okay, but, but for the replacement of.
Yeah, we're.
Yes, we're doing a journal entry that we will fund that position, the new hire, plus one of the promotions for IT.
Don't you say that, huh?
Yes, she's picking up John.
She's going to pick up the other.
And there's another one, but we're not doing.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
Okay, that's fair, thank you.
Get her a copy of the JE before she gets downstairs. Just kidding. She'll be right back up. I mean, yeah, she will.
Okay. When is that person planning to come in, at what time?
Monday. Oh, did she say Monday?
No.
Three-thirty?
Today.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, no, I thought you meant the.
Oh, no, and this person is coming in from solid waste.
Evidently, yeah.
He was terminated today by the board? You terminated today? Okay. Um, I have a draft here, I didn't invite anyone to your public, your elected officials meeting, so there's a draft. I want to be sure it's the correct verbiage before it was out, that's next week.
I have an appointment at three-thirty, so I will be here when it comes.
And we reschedule, we'll reschedule auto-titling. Is that okay?
Please issue on the ballot, just to elected officials. Oh, we're not ready for this.
Well, you're, no, you, oh, you're not going to do it? On Thursday, inviting them on Tuesday at three-thirty to come in and talk with the board about.
Oh, oh, I see.
I'm sorry.
Yes, the judges?
Well, that's the question, too, elected officials and departments, like auto, like auto-provation or just the elected officials? And the overcrowding task force are not even that?
I was talking about something else.
We wanted to have all the judges in here and the sheriff.
Not their quarter, the auditor?
No, just because we want to explain to them what we.
Okay.
Just the ones that, that's my fault, because I said, yeah, but.
And the prosecutor? Prosecutor, judges, sheriff?
Yeah, the prosecutor.
Not the prosecutor, no, because he's, no, we want the ones that were here telling us they wanted us to enroll, right?
We want Judge Pittman here, too, don't we?
Judge Pittman?
All judges?
And Judge Burger, they said Judge Berger, or she did.
So just, this is, this is.
Well, you know, we, we could ask, I mean, the prosecutor, only because, just as a courtesy.
We'll just let Deb know who.
Well, if we ask him, he's probably going to be opposed, so.
Well, no, no, I.
I thought we wanted support.
After, well, no, I agree, but I think after what was explained, I think he, my opinion was he's not, I don't know if he was really opposed, that he just was, he was just responding to a lot of.
Sure, but Deb just needs to know who to invite. All the judges and the sheriff, that's it. Three-thirty, next week, okay? No elected officials then?
Well, yeah, I would have.
All the judges.
Wasn't there was another, wasn't there another one that was mentioned? No, I'm thinking, it probably wasn't. What about Judge Delano?
That's all the judges, she's, I'll do.
Oh, you said, I'm sorry.
All the judges. And the sheriff? And the sheriff. No elected officials, that's what Deb's asking. No other elected officials, correct?
Well, it probably would be a courtesy to let them know, that we come together and just let them know.
I guess it depends on why we want them here. If we want them here for show of support to enroll, so they'll be in the record courier and all, then we should invite those who came for that purpose.
Well, I think Deb just needs to know who to send.
I think they will all support it, Janet just, she went on record, we'll report her here. I, I find it hard to believe that Vic will not support it. I would think with everybody in the room, he will support it. That's was my motive to say, why don't we invite them? You know, we don't have to, maybe I'm off the beaten path, it's been a long day.
Judges, sheriff?
The one, yeah.
Going once. Judges and sheriff. Okay. Amy, did Denise get with you about a letter?
She didn't, but I think maybe she got with Deb.
Okay.
Something was emailed over, so.
Okay. Amy, do you know if that's going to be today?
I don't, let me go ask Deb, what happened?
So we kind of know what we're doing.
Is there anything else we deal with today, other than?
Well, that's what I'm just letting Amy find out here, maybe not.